Good evening, my waterberry says exactly seven o'clock Mike, is that about correct? Does your waterberry say the same thing? I like to stop right on time. Thank you so much for coming. This is a great crowd, we may have some more people come in. I think we were seating arrangements here maybe for around a hundred people, maybe a little bit more. There are refreshments at the back, I'll say a little bit more about that later, but we're going to be very informal. Bobby Estes, you can even keep your hat on if you want to, I won't mind a bit. I won't mind a bit, we're going to be very, very informal. I wore my shorts again today Bobby, so we're talking about a rec center here, proposal, so I thought maybe remove the shorts would be in order, okay? At this time, I would like to issue a special welcome to all of you. I know a lot of you, and I know a lot of places where you come from, some in town, some out of town, Bob, and we've got a good mix of people here, and I'll bet that we have more come in later. If you will, I'd like to call your attention to your agenda, we'll try to stay with that, I will say a little bit more about that later. I am going to have to make a couple of agenda item changes, but at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Mike Bishop, if he would come to the microphone. Mike, as your agenda says, is the minister for a couple of churches here, he's also founded an organization, it's a fine organization called American Speaks, and Mike, I'd like to ask you, if you will, to lead us in our invocation.
Thank you Bill, I tell you what, I want to say before we pray this morning, or this evening, that I'm glad, number one, that we're having this opportunity tonight, and I'm especially appreciative of Dr. Bill and the Transparency and Government Group that saw it both proper and good to open it with prayer. So if you would, I'm going to ask you, if you would, to just bow your heads and let's go to the Lord in prayer. Gracious and loving Heavenly Father, I just want to offer thanks, first off, and just tell you how grateful I am for the life you've given us. I'm grateful for this country in which we live, and the freedom and opportunities that it affords. I'm grateful for the great state of Arkansas, and for this wonderful community of Harrison and Boone County, which we're blessed to call home. I'm grateful for the leadership that's found in our elected officials in our community, our leaders with vision, leaders that bring promise to building a better community, and leaders that see the need for all voices to have the opportunity to be heard. Heavenly Father, I'm grateful for each and every citizen that has shown an interest and willingness to give up their evening to participate in this process, and I have to believe that the interest and intent of all is to pursue the common good and best welfare of all. I pray that even though opinions may differ tonight, that we do so with respect for one another, and that we present ourselves in a matter that is pleasing to you, Heavenly Father, that we seek counsel from you and the words that we speak, the actions taken, and at the end of the day, will come to you for guidance. That simply your will be done over and above all of our personal goals and desires, and we offer this prayer in the blessed name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you Mike. As I was listening to Mike's invocation, the words he said, I'd almost like to have that typed out, I'd almost like to have a copy of that, and have that prayed, Bob, in almost every, every meeting that we have. I think your words were very appropriate, Mike, and thank you so much. Also, I'm very thankful that you've helped start, or you did start, I guess, with a lady in Little Rock, I believe, as your coordinator, the American Speaks organization. If you have any questions about that tremendous organization, be able to, I'm sure Mike would be able to answer some questions about that sometime this evening, as you talk to him, search him out at the break time, maybe. I'd like to also ask Mr. Frank Hanson, Frank, hold up your hand back here. Frank is a tremendous member of TIG, Transparency and Government Group of Boone County, longtime law man, surveyor, I think he's been a buffalo rider, a clown in rodeo, he's done all kinds of things. The thing we know him for is his ability to be a good person with a camera. He's a professional videographer, and Frank, I'd like to ask you, if you would, to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
We're trying to pray. Our pledge of allegiance to the new flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Frank, and as Mike mentioned a moment ago in his invocation, it is a tremendous, tremendous blessing, I think, for all of us, to be able to gather like this in this country, and to be able to have discussions, interaction with each other. At this time, I'd like to make one or two announcements that might be pertinent to one or all of us. You'll notice, standing back here, Joe Crockett, would you hold up your hand, Joe, right at the back, there are two signs back there that point to where the restrooms are, they're not right there beside Mike now, don't get, we don't want to, don't want to get you wrong here, the restrooms lead out toward the north, I guess, portion of this building, but we appreciate Mike, and I would like to say a special word about Mike and Jeff Crockett for buying this building and letting this building be available to us here in the community. Mike is, I guess, sort of a, you kind of run this building, I think, don't you, Jeff, working, working with Mike, Joe rather, and then Tracy Harris, Tracy, are you here tonight? Tracy's the one that we make our reservations through. Scott, I think you're here, Scott Hoffman back at the door. Scott, thank you for helping us with all the sound. I predict great things for this Crockett Enterprise to make this thing, as it has been in the past, a great part of our, of our public facility here, and private facilities here, but thanks to all of you for the help that you've, you've given us. Also, notice we have three exits here, and we're leaving all of those open, so that we can get a little air through here, maybe, or a little breezeway, and then anybody that comes in this direction can see that we're here in this building. We do have refreshments at the back, I'd like to thank one of our TIG members, Ida Ellen Sims Edwards, for providing the refreshments, and by the way, there's fresh made cinnamon rolls back there, some fresh cookies, some, all, all kinds of, there's some waters, soft drinks, so again, we're going to be very informal, so make yourself home, and anytime you want to get up during the meeting and try some of the refreshments, please do so. There are several agenda changes, if you would, look at the agenda in front of you, on the, at the top of the second page, mark out Bob Pinson's name, and pencil in, if you have a pen or pencil, Jeff Crockett, former mayor, city of Harrison. And then, on the last page, pencil in where Jeff Crockett was, pencil in Bob Pinson. Right up above that, on the last page, where it says Bill Michelle, pencil in, or ink in, Rick Elumbaugh, E-L-U-M-B-A-U-G-H, Rick is the mayor of Batesville. We won't introduce everybody right now, but we will try to do that when they get ready to speak. And then I'd like to also, under Luke Figurt's name, on the second page, Luke Figurt, Luke, I think you've been elevated in salary, prestige, position, and everything. Luke is no longer the finance director, he is the chief financial officer for the city of Harrison, we will make sure that. And then coming on down, just after the break, under Wade Phillips, Wade, where are you? There he is. Wade is along with the director of Public Works Department for the city of Harrison. Get this, get this, this title, he is the chief operating officer, the big COO of the city of Harrison, so Wade, we will make sure that we put you on there. And then, right after Wade speaks, and we have the questions from the audience here, the public, pencil in, if you will, Mr. Don Price. This gentleman, if I had a contest here tonight for who came the farthest, I think this gentleman and his wife would win, all the way, I believe, Don from Dallas, Texas, or near there, is that right? And he's also serves on our panel. He is the, the owner, director, manager, whatever you want to call it, of three fitness centers in, in America. One of them is here in town, and I'm not going to say the name of it, but I'm going to let him tell us after a while, the name of it, okay? And so, he represents not only business, but also a fitness or recreation area, too. So, those, those changes, we do need to make, related to our agenda. I would like to say this, that the purpose of this meeting is sort of like, maybe Mike alluded to a while ago in his invocation, we want to have this as a meeting for questions to be asked, suggestions to be made, comments to be made, questions hopefully to be answered, and that's basically what our purpose here is. Our group, our TIG group, really believes in openness, transparency of government, of peoples, people being able to know what their rights are, being able and willing and courageous enough to speak to those rights. And I think, once we lose that, if we ever do, God forbid, in America, then I think we're down the drain. And so, I would hope that all of us would go home tonight, thankful that we're able to have our wishes known, our thoughts known, be able to make comments, suggestions, without fear from anybody, anywhere, anytime. I would also like to announce that our next public forum will probably be right next door in this same building, will be also 7:00 PM on Tuesday evening, October the 29th, here in this same, same area. With that in mind, I'd like to call two or three things, your, your attention to two or three things, on your place setting. You'll see a little brochure, I'm colorblind Jerry, so I think someone said it was green or blue, I don't know, a little Transparency and Government Group brochure, it says Arkansas, Freedom of Information on the very front of it. This law, passed in 1967, guarantees all of us free access, in many, many cases, to public documents, and to go to public meetings and ask questions and comments. I hope that you'll take copies of that home with you, there's several more extra, if you want to take some home with you, and you're welcome to it. There's also a set of about eighty-five questions at each place setting that have been put together. There may be more questions, and some of these questions may interest you, or may not interest you, or may spur you on to ask other questions, and to get maybe other comments, so we hope that you take that home with you, if you'd like to. At this time, I'd like to introduce the mayor of the city of Harrison, Jerry Jackson, to my right over here, Jerry, if you want to come up here and speak, or speak from right there, whatever's best for you, okay? Mayor Jerry Jackson.
All right, thank you Dr. Lewis. I want to start by introducing the team that's on our panel, and I'll share with you a little bit about what their role is, because we all have different roles. I'll start with Luke Figurt. Luke is the numbers guy, you know, there's a ton of numbers involved in this thing, and he's been kind of working the numbers for a long, long time, so any, any questions about numbers, Luke would be the guy. Luke is also the assistant swim coach, his wife is in the audience, and she is the swim coach for about seventy participants, and Luke drives the car, but Luke also knows a lot about swimming, and Luke has also been to well over, maybe, a hundred facilities, somewhere in that area, he, they've been traveling with the swim team a long time, so he's got a lot of knowledge when it comes to swim. Next to him, we've got Mayor Rick Elumbaugh, and Rick, I call Eric Rick my favorite mayor, it's because when we met, it just, he helped me in so many different ways, I have him on Speed Day aisle, and he kind of answers anytime I call, so thank you for that, Rick. Moving down the line, it looks like Wade is down there. Now Wade is, he has a general understanding of the complete project. Everybody here, Wade, Chuck, and Luke, along with Matt Bell, have been working on this project for about a year and a half, long before I entered their lives, so Wade, in addition to knowing everything about the project, he also is really the expert on the trails, so if you have a question about the trails, Wade would be the one there. And then you move down to the Public Works Director, Chuck Eddington, Chuck is also knowledgeable about the whole project, and he'll be talking about the facility, and a lot of the things that we'll be bringing to Harrison with the facility, so Chuck, any, any question about sports activities, I guess with the facility, or even with the rec, Chuck would be the one to direct those to. So, that's my group, I want to share with you that I started this venture about a little over a year ago, when I entered Batesville, and I met Mayor Rick, and I was down there to look at City Hall, and police and fire, and things like that, because I knew that would be part of what we'd want to do in Harrison. Mayor had to show off the rec center, and in doing so, I thought, man, this is great, maybe someday Harrison could have something like this, had no idea we'd even be talking about it. So, I get back, I take office, and these guys corner me, and they say, we've been working behind the scenes on this community center, and that we need your support. Well, I mean, that caught me off guard, so I did some studying, in addition to Mayor Rick, there's about five other mayors, I spoke with, similar sized towns, and they all had rec centers and indoor pool facilities, and after listening to them, speaking to the C, the Chamber of Commerce people, understanding what this facility can do for economic development, for recruitment of professional people, doctors, specialty, and then, more important, quality of life for everybody, wellness and health, and, and just so many things that this, this thing can do. So, at that time, I jumped on board, and from there, it's pretty much history, we announced in July, that we were going to go forward with this, and that's pretty much where I am. But thank you all for coming, really appreciate it, it's a bigger crowd than I think we expected. We're also on Facebook Live, so thanks to Dan Reynolds, and we'll continue from there, sir.
Thanks Mayor. Any questions, suggestions, comments for Jerry, if you will? Any questions, comments, or suggestions you might make?
Thank you.
Jerry, I'll have to say, I'm very surprised.
Well, I'm the one with the expertise.
I don't know that, I don't know that I've ever seen a mayor, or heard a mayor, not speak longer than he did, that, that surprised me also. Thanks Jerry. Next gentleman is no, no stranger to a lot of us, and I was certainly thankful, Jeff Crockett, that you decided to put a bid in for this building. I, with your staff, with Joe, and Tracy, and Scott, I expect great things out of this facility, and I think it's, it's nice that you saw fit to put a bid in on this building to the college, who won the bid, and I'm thankful, as a citizen here, that you were able to, to become the owner, operator, instigator, whatever, of this facility, whether he will always call this Duran Center, I don't know, that'll be up to him, his family, maybe, whatever. At this time, I'd like to introduce our former mayor, Jeff Crockett. Jeff, if you'd like to come up here, or if you want to sit there, whatever.
Okay. The Recplex is what we're here to talk about tonight, Aquaplex, whatever the term is, you want to call it, but I have a few concerns. Number one, Parks Department, Parks Commission, has run the Parks Department for a long time. There's been some talk, rumors that I've heard, that they're talking at the city council and the mayor's level about dissolving the Parks Commission, and taking that department under the city. I'd like to know if, I'd like to have that question answered, and know if that's true or not. Also, the parks has been charged with operating the facilities we have at the present. I'm not, I'm not totally comfortable with turning over a forty million dollar facility to a department that is not taking care of what we have, the way it should be taken care of, and there's excuses that we don't have enough money, and, well, then, maybe we need to raise the fees. There's all kinds of things that I see, bathrooms in the park, I don't know how long they have been not open, and why they're not open. Showers in the pool, there was, at the last meeting we had, there was one of the gentlemen that were at the meeting, said he took his granddaughter to the pool, and had to take her home to take a shower, because only one out of the six showers were working in the pool. I was told that they didn't have the funding to repair them. You know, showers aren't extremely expensive to repair, and if the funding is that tight, maybe you ought to look at user fees, I mean, that's what you're looking at here, is user fees for this facility. The cost of the facility, forty million dollars, Batesville built theirs for twenty-six million. In 2015, Bentonville built an eighty-four thousand square foot facility. They have a zero depth entry family leisure pool, they've got swim lanes, they've got a twenty by twenty-five competitive pool with eight lap swim lanes, they've got a sixty-five hundred square foot community room, I don't know, it's eighty-four thousand feet, it's comparable in size, I would think, to what we're talking about here. It cost them sixteen million dollars. It cost them sixteen million dollars in 2015. That's four years ago. I don't think we've tripled that cost in four years. Out of that sixteen million dollars, Bentonville got two million dollars from the Walmart Family Foundation, one million dollars from the Walmart Foundation, one million dollars from the Bentonville Advertising Promotion, and one million dollars from Care Foundation. So the taxpayers were only stranded with ten million dollars of that project, not forty million dollars. The other thing that I have a little problem with is this page here that we've got in front of us that shows revenue and expenses. And the revenue on this thing, sales tax is one point one seven five million dollars, and then they've got memberships and the CATP C contribution, for a total of two and a half million dollars. I spent some time on the phone this week with the Parks Director from Batesville. He said their current revenue on their facility is about one point one million dollars, and their current expenditures on their facility is about one point one million dollars, and they're operating at a break even. We've got expenditures here of two point four million dollars. Don't know where all that's going. I think those questions need to be answered. Also on here, now, make this my last point, and we can move on to the next one, but in 2023, they're showing a net revenue of a hundred million dollars. In 2025, they're showing a net revenue of forty-eight million dollars. It's dropped in half in three years. Is it going to, down at the bottom, after the expenses are taken off, is it going to continue to decline? Are the taxes and fees not going to go up at the rate the expenses are going to go up? And are we going to be looking at five or six down the, years down the road, at a negative cash flow on this? Those are some of my concerns with this project. Does Harrison deserve something? Yes, they deserve something that's this expensive? Don't know. If Bentonville can do it for sixteen million dollars, why are we at forty million dollars?
Who would you address those questions to on the panel?
Any and all of the planners.
Any and all of the planners?
Planners, the planners of the project.
Sure, I think I can take the first one, and then the rest are really about numbers, so we'll turn those over to Luke. The first question he had was about the Parks Commission and the present job they're doing right now. All I want to say at this point, because I wouldn't say anything before we ever presented anything to the city council, but at this point, I will say that the city of Harrison is going to become a lot more involved in facilities than we have been in the past. And I'll turn the numbers over to Luke.
Jerry, let me ask a question there. Comment a little bit more of what you meant by that statement, you're going to be watching facilities a little bit more. Can you be more specific?
Yeah, well, in the past, if all of you don't realize, and I know Mayor Crockett does, and some of you in the audience, the Parks and Rec is ran by a commission of seven commissioners, and those commissioners oversee the projects. Now, the city owns all of the facilities, all the land, so it's totally city-owned. But the city is not involved in the day-to-day operations. And by saying we're going to become more involved, I think that's something that probably the city should have taken that stand a long time ago, because there's probably been an issue for a long time, not just recently. And we have the ability to do it, and there are several things that you could do. You know, the city can ask to replace the commission with an advisory council. The city can, they kind of control the money that's given to the parks, so they've got a lot of control in that regard. I think the main point is the city is going to be responsible for the facilities. And like I said before, they should have been a long time ago. When this came about and created a commission, it was back in the early sixties during urban renewal. At that time, we had one little baseball field, and I'm not even sure if we had a swimming pool. So the need for the commission in the early sixties was totally different than it might be today. But I have met with the chairman, Jerry Mailings, several times, and we've had several discussions about this matter. But I will say in the future, the city will be a lot more involved in the facilities.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, my, any other questions that related to what ex-mayor, former mayor?
You'd like me to address some of the questions?
What he said. Any other comments from the audience, first, Luke?
Sure.
Anyone else from the audience before we get to Luke on what Jeff Crockett, former mayor, said?
I have another question. You mentioned comparisons, I mean, this facility and the cost of one of, was it Bentonville?
Yep.
Was the population of Bentonville, or Crockett?
Population-wise?
Compared to Harrison?
Probably by, I would believe, I don't know, Bentonville, I would believe, is in a fifteen thousand range?
Bentonville's about, I'd say, closer to forty thousand, maybe thirty-five, forty thousand maybe now.
That's a town.
That's the city.
Wade will tell us here in a minute.
It's pretty good size. What's it show?
Chad, I'm from Rogers.
How much?
Fifty thousand.
How many? How many?
Fifty-one thousand.
Fifty-one thousand. I used to live there, but it's grown more than I thought it has. Rogers is around forty thousand, I believe, and Bentonville, maybe now it's a little bit bigger.
Ours is around forty thousand?
Pardon?
No, Rogers was.
Rogers, I think, is around forty thousand. Any other questions for former mayor Jeff Crockett? At this time, I'd like to introduce them. Luke, I'm going to say, notice Luke's name, because Luke, I've had trouble with this. It's a long act. Will all of you say this with me together? Fire, Luke, fire. Okay, just move that. Luke, come on up here.
All right, I'll try to first touch a little bit on some of those questions that they were, that were offered up this last time. I apologize, I left my.
Wait for me back here real quick.
I kind of want to start with the twenty-six million dollar cost, and I'm going to move around here a little bit, and I hope when I get to my cell person here.
Joe, can anybody check the lights, make it a little bit better? Did anybody check, turn the lights down a little? That might help, that might help see this.
Can everybody see those numbers there? It might be a little hard, I might be able to.
There you go.
A little better?
Thanks, Doc.
So I reached out to the engineering firm, architecture and engineering firm today, just to see what it was that Batesville's community center cost. So, and we mentioned a lot of numbers here, but the community center itself actually came out to twenty-four point four million. That was the number that they had actually given me. I know it's hard to believe, but in doing some research on construction costs, especially non-residential construction costs with inflation and the such, I mean, it's actually eighteen percent, I believe, over four years, and they started it about four, or five or six years ago. So that's where you see a lot of that Eptech and cost going as well, as long as, as well as the fact that we're adding three million dollars in trails to that, along with some current facility upgrades, and adding an additional multipurpose court to this project as well. And you can quickly see how this gets up to that thirty-nine million dollar mark, that number that's been thrown around. Again, this is not playing with any numbers, it's just the fact that there's these higher costs, and there's additional facilities that are involved in this process. So I wanted to point that out, as far as part of that twenty-six million dollars that's been thrown out there. Back here to our presentation, to that. And also, you had mentioned a million dollars in operating revenue. I'm not exactly sure where that number came from, and part of the reason where we drew our revenue from was Batesville. I happened to get their revenue cost for the entire Parks Department, and this particular one shows three point eight million dollars as far as Parks revenue. And it has it split out by, you know, different kind of memberships. They actually show here about nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars in memberships. I believe the one in front of you has a little over eight hundred thousand dollars in memberships. So that's, all of our budget numbers are very, very conservative when it comes to revenue. We are looking directly at the memberships that Batesville has, comparing that to us, and then comparing that to different localities as well, because I believe Mayor Rick mentioned that there was fifty thousand people in their reach. We've been talking thirty-five to forty. He has mentioned it's actually closer to fifty thousand people in their thirty-mile reach. Harrison's is about ninety thousand, is what we're being told. So we have reason to believe that that actually may increase, but we wanted to be very conservative with our estimates whenever it came down to the revenue side of it. And then expenses, obviously, you budget those a little bit higher, but we did account for all of the new salaries and wages that would be considered for this new facility that's going to generate about forty to sixty new jobs, whether it be part-time or full-time. So we did take that into consideration as well, as well as the utility costs and everything else. We've got contingencies in there for putting aside money to help rebuild some of the things as well. I believe there's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to rebuild that at some point in time. And yes, it is that. I believe you said it was, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, and it goes down to forty-eight. Again, by budgeting that conservatively, both revenues and expenses, we actually think we're going to come kind of in the middle there, and hopefully we'll see that, what we need to do going forward in that facility, whether or not we can cut back some expenses or somehow gain additional revenue. We will obviously be looking at that as soon as that starts generating revenue and we start getting sales tax from that as well. The sales tax is also very conservative. We just got sales tax numbers today. They are actually up. Again, it's actually up ten percent. Over last month, we were always very conservative and budgeted about a one percent increase. So we tend to see that trend going up, and this is actually budgeted at no increase over the next couple of years. So we feel very confident that our numbers will probably be exceeding in our revenue, and that's actually how we're justifying, you know, these numbers that we're putting out. Again, we're two or three years away, they're just projections at this point in time, but we're being very conservative with those projections, and it's still going to be financially feasible to do this. So I know that's a long-winded answer to the part of, is it going to be able to make money or sustain itself? And we believe that is yes, a resounding yes. A little bit about the actual project itself, I don't know that I had any other questions to answer for you, Mayor Crockett, but the, I did want to get into our point of the presentation here, and what I would typically talk about, and the numbers part of that. But a little bit of background, and the reason why I say a little bit of background, because I've been involved in a few of these different projects, at least looking into the fact, I know I was not here about ten years ago with the YMCA. They tried to get a group going at that point in time, unfortunately, at that point, it wasn't financially feasible to do so, so some people backed off of that project. About, excuse me, three years ago, there was another group. A lot of our swim parents got together, along with some others, to try to get something a little bit smaller, you know, maybe a smaller swimming pool and maybe a half-court basketball and to do it privately. And unfortunately, that still was not going to be sustainable and able to be operated to where we could continue that on. So at that point, we really kind of realized it was going to have to be some sort of tax involved with this. But we have looked at all different types of activities for that. And this facility and this project that we're putting out there, we feel like this is going to be something for everybody, something that everybody can use, doesn't matter if you're one or a hundred and one. Everybody can use something in these kind of facilities. That's not always the case whenever you look at some of these smaller projects, or even doing it personally. It's just, it's hard to get everybody involved and make it either affordable for everybody to come, or to actually get people to be able to use all of the stuff at the same time. Again, that market reach of ninety thousand people, if you try to get it in a very, very small facility, you just get overrun, and it's not even worth getting in there sometimes. And we want it to be available. We'll mention a little bit later about some of the hours and stuff that will be involved with these projects, but we want something that's going to be available to everybody, like I said, not overrun. We are building, yes, a forty million dollar facility, it's a large number. We agree. We actually started out with a fifty-five million dollar facility and tried to cut that down, because we saw the need of all these other things, but we also realized the fact that we want to take it down to what we feel that people can afford, but also that people will be able to use still. And so, you know, adding that fourth basketball court versus what Batesville had, I know they've been looking at even possible expansion already, because they get so many people to go through that. They have thirteen hundred people a day go through that facility. And so whenever we're looking at that, we've got to be able to account for that as well. And these plans, Jerry mentioned a little bit earlier, that, you know, I go, I travel around to all these different facilities. We go, as a swim team, we go to Arkansas, or we have Arkansas teams, we have Kansas teams, Oklahoma teams, Missouri teams. We've been all around these four states to these different facilities, and I always drag my family around whenever we go to them. Even if we're not there for a swim meet, I'll take them around to these facilities and say, hey, come look at this, because we want to be able to research, and I want to know what's going to be best. And so I always ask our Parks Directors when we go to them, and I've asked Jeff Owens this at Batesville several times, I've said, you know, what's the best thing about your facility? And he'll show me a lot of things, whether it be the indoor swimming pool, the lazy river, the basketball courts. I know the, what is it, the zip line's a big hit there as well for the pool. But I also come back and ask him, and I said, what do you do wrong? What would you do differently? And I don't know if you can answer what he would say, but I know every time I ask him, he says storage. It's not the big sexy thing to talk about, but it's always necessary. So we're constantly asking these people, what is it that we could, we should do better? And they're always willing to help. Mayor Rick has been wonderful whenever we go visit. I think he's given probably thirty tours just to people in Harrison, let alone all the tours he's given to all those others. So they've all been very gracious and very willing to help and tell us what we could do differently to help make this facility the best it can be. Jerry had mentioned something about the economic impact, and, you know, we talked about recruitment as well, bringing people to town. Chuck will speak a little bit about this later, but, you know, we, you're trying to have tournaments come to town, and what that tournament does, we're bringing those teams into town, what kind of revenue it generates for our local businesses, it's just huge whenever we can talk about, you know, an eighty-team tournament, or three hundred swimmers coming to town, what that does for our local economy. And obviously, it just continues to raise that up. And quality of life, he mentioned as well. You know, I've got three boys, I talk about the quality of life issues. I've got one, my oldest son, he's, he wants to travel internationally, and I'm probably not going to get to keep him around Harrison, Arkansas, and I understand that. But I've also got a middle son who loves the outdoors, he loves to go hiking and canoeing and kayaking, and he just needs something to keep him around. So something here in town that would keep our local, our young professionals that will be coming back after they either graduate, or if they just stay here, something for them to do and something for them to go to in and of the evening. This facility, I believe, is going to be key to bringing all those people that may not necessarily be looking to come back to Harrison after they graduate college, or after they get out of high school, they're looking to go see what else there is out there. I really feel like this facility and these upgrades are really going to start to bring our local youth back into our community. And recruitment as well, you know, we talk about doctors being recruited, and I don't want to steal anybody's thunder here, because I know Mayor Rick can talk about doctors all day long that they recruited to their area, but a huge recruitment in the healthcare industry, it's always big to see that and bring people to this facility and show them what our city has to offer. But also just, what is there to do after five o'clock? And we've got the bounce house now, and the skating, and the, I believe, the rock climbing gym and all that stuff. It's not always necessarily something for everybody. This facility will actually generate something for all users, and we really feel like that's a very big key in this project. Thank you very much, I appreciate it, and all the questions.
Could you answer the last question, though, about Bentonville and how they built a center of that size for sixteen million?
We go based off of our architects and engineers. It's their cost, they actually give us a cost of about two hundred dollars a square feet. As far as what they actually have, and their eighty-six, or, excuse me, eighty-four thousand square feet facility, I'm not in touch with their architects or engineers, so I can't tell you exactly how they did that. I can only tell you, and it's also kind of what Batesville ran into as well, as far as their square footage, how much it cost them for those services. They're telling us two hundred dollars a square foot, or two to two hundred and much it costs them for those services. They're telling us $200 a square foot or 200 to 250. Unfortunately, I don't have their figures in front of me for Bentonville, so...
I think it would be worth checking into to find out why they were able to do it.
Obviously, we will actually bid out, I mean, all of our projects. I think that's first key. We're looking at, and Wade can talk a little bit more about the general contract part of it, you know, and how they go out for bids. But that's something that is mandatory about going out for bids and how that works in our process. So, obviously, we'll look for the best qualified, I want to underline that very hard, qualified individuals who can do those kinds of work. I know pools are very specialty work, and obviously, if they've done something with an $84,000, or excuse me, $84,000 square foot facility, we'd obviously look to see what, who did that and how they were able to do that.
Okay. One other point that I'd like to ask you about is the 90,000 population that you've been told is in this area within a 50-mile radius. I looked up some numbers on the 2018 census, and there is 90,000 within a 50-mile radius. However, that includes Benton, or I'm sorry, Carroll County, which is 28,000 people. Then if you factor out the poverty level in this area, really, you're looking at a population draw of only about 58,000 people.
I think, and also, I'll touch on the poverty issue if you don't mind. Independence County has almost the same county income. I believe it might be within 500 to $1,000 of their median income. So, that's, you know, when we look at that and we look at all those draws that come in, but also, we talked to people in Branson that swim with us. They actually are talking about coming down here, and we don't necessarily usually have that draw coming from Branson because they don't have that indoor facility, the indoor aquatic facility. So, to be able to pull from that direction as well as other places, you know, Berryville has a very good community center. We believe that. It's wonderful. We, our swim team actually goes over there two nights a week because we don't have anything here in town. Mountain Home is looking at that fact as well, seeing if they can do something like that. So... You know, when we're trying to consider all of that, and we are trying to consider all of the population, yes, Newton County, Cersei County, whatever it may be, we're taking all that into consideration, and that's why we still believe that our 8,800 memberships that would be very similar to Batesville would still be very, I guess, very accurate or very close to accurate.
Okay. I just want to say that from what I know, that Bentonville's facility, it's just a community center and in the torium, it doesn't include the outdoor water park. So, with our fees of 26 million?
Yes.
And theirs was 60 or 18, and then price changes over the last six years, whatever that would be, it doesn't seem to be that much of difference. Because theirs does not include an outdoor water park.
I also think they have only one basketball court in their facility. Well, I believe that one or two. They underbuilt. Bentonville underbuilt. Beautiful, beautiful facility, but they then underbuilt. Rick?
Luke, you were saying about bringing our young professionals back into this town. At this time, we're losing jobs out of this town. They're not filling back. They're not bringing new ones in. And the problem that I see here in the near future is for young professionals coming back from college, they have to get educated jobs. The new build in Harrison is new banks, new car washes, and they can only take so many people. Right now, we don't have a workforce in Harrison that really can sustain a big company coming into us. And if you go off the census of 2018, 55% of the residents in Harrison are lived in by their own. 45% are rentals. In 45% are rentals, how many is housing paying for? Plus Harrison, once again, we're coming up on our wages, but we're not to the top end of wages where everybody else is in the rest of the world. The key item to wages in this town is when housing come in, they went to a state standard of rent. That made all the landlords in this town take the rent up, and we were still at low wages. People's been struggling in this town for the last eight years. Where are we going to get young professionals jobs in Harrison? You can only put so many in banks. We've got empty buildings set. We have not engaged into call centers or, I don't know, it's just young professionals, you say that. But when it comes to our kids in this town, most of them leave to go somewhere there's a job. There's a guy that's very adamant about building this rec center. And the thing is, I looked at him on Facebook, and I don't ever say anything to him, but he got a job as an ambulance driver in Branson because he can't afford to take one in Harrison. So, when it comes to spending $45 million, and I'll tell you what, you won't get me to stop $45 million. Once you put the interest on it, we will have to pay the tax for $45 million. So, to say that this complex is going to keep our young professionals, you also said with your son that likes to hunt, fish, and camp. We got that. They're already there. We don't have to pay for it. I don't think to use the rec center as the guide to keep people in here coming back from college to come to the rec center. We still got to look at the jobs. And we're, in your future, in the chamber's future, I just don't see until we get the housing, do house workers in this town that can get a company to come in that can fulfill their jobs. I just really, I listened to Walbach, I listened to Pace, I listened to these guys, how they hire masses of people, and then three months later, they get three people out of a mass. That's because we have a poor quality workforce.
Yeah. Rick mentioned interest rate on top of the 39,000 kind of equally...
39,000.
39 million, yeah, 39 million. I wanted to say one other thing. One of the reasons, it's probably the reason that I said to myself that we've got to do this now, and that's because of interest rates. Believe me, folks, I would love to wait another year, two years, even maybe when I'm gone and you can do it. But today, we are quoted 2.3%, and interest is a big factor. And if all of a sudden that thing starts moving and we get six or seven, this thing's out of play. So, we can do it now and lock in 2.3%. So, thank you, Rick, for bringing that to my attention.
Excuse me, I have just a couple of things to say. I'm glad Mayor Jackson getting more involved with the parks and rec because I know several years ago, it used to be the Harrison City Pool. I don't know if people remember the old city pool, but whenever admission was paid or something, then it was brought over to the city and reseeded into the city funds. And then they filled that in, forcing the people to get the new swimming pool that we have now. And then the Parks Commission was formed, and then the city wasn't receiving any more money from the city pool or from the activities. So, I guess I was wondering why that happened, and they had their own bank accounts instead of the city, instead of the money going into the city bank accounts. And then also, the city used to collect the restaurant and hotel and motel tax, and now that has been turned over to CATPC. And I know in the, excuse me, got to get my glasses on. I know in the last seven years, since 2012, I don't know when CATPC took it over, but it's been rising up. And in the seven-year span, let me find my piece of paper. In the seven-year span for the hotels and the motels, there's been over $4 million collected. And I guess I'm just wondering if the city still had that money, why they couldn't use some of that money to function or whatever, or where that money has went. And then if the recsplex goes through, what's going to happen to the city pool that we have now that we as taxpayers pay taxes on to build it? What will happen to it?
Okay. That's okay. I'll try to answer at least a little bit as far as the bank accounts for Parks and Recreation along with CATPC. Since I've been here since 2012, I do know that it has been with Parks and Recs and CATPC to where it has not come to the city directly. I know we have started reviewing, Chuck and I have the Parks budget along with their financial statements. And part of that $4 million you're referring to for CATPC is to start bringing other events into town. I mean, that's the whole goal of the CATPC is to increase tourism by advertising and promotion. That's actually, I guess, part of their name as well, what they indicate. But that's their job, is to start bringing in these tournaments, these events into town. So, that's where some, a lot of that $4 million is, is for individuals to promote and to go out and try to get events to come to town. They also do give money to Parks and Rec currently. I'm not exactly sure the percent. Chuck, you might pop in there with the percent that you get. I believe it's close to 25%. Is that correct?
25, yes.
Okay. So, they get 25% of CATPC's revenue. That goes right now to help sustain what we have with the Parks Department and, you know, to operate what we've got now with the pools and summer recreation and all the programs that are put on currently. So, that's where 25% of that money goes directly, is to help with our operations, what we've got now. Would it help, would it fund all the activities that would go on in this? There's no way. Obviously, it would help, and if we continue to grow that CATPC, that revenue stream, then yes, it will continue to allow us to build additional programs. Again, Chuck can get into that quite a bit. I feel like I'm taking his thunder there, so. Did I answer at least those couple of questions that you had?
Yeah. And what would happen to the pool and what we have now?
Okay. Well, again, I don't want to steal his thunder. I do know that the pool would not stay. We wouldn't be able to operate both pools. So, that would have to be filled in or something that we can do to make that a usable facility, whether it be a multipurpose outdoor court or anything else. Again, Chuck can probably speak to a little bit of what we could do with that, but that's the short answer. Yes, sir?
Kind of piggyback off the gentleman comments over there. I think that, speaking for millennials, I fit into that category, talking about economic development, a big issue. I have friends that go to U of A, and they don't have a choice to come back to Harrison. When they go to a four-year college, they're going, I just had a friend graduated with an engineering degree. He had an offer in Little Rock and Springfield. And I think it's great. I want, I have three babies. I want my babies to be able to have a great place, but I also want them to be able to grow up and have a job available in the same town that they grew up in. And two city council meetings ago, Mayor Jackson made the comment, if we don't do this now, we can't afford it. My question is, if we do this, what will we not be able to afford in the future that could provide actual job opportunities that would actually create economic growth and development? Because that's more important. I'm a millennial. I would say that. I would move to a town for a job, not for a rec center.
I will mention Bob, our Chamber CEO, he has actually been entertaining calls from prospective clients, and their first question is, what do you have to do after 5 o'clock? So, you know, business is trying to come into town. That's their first question. They already know our workforce numbers. Bob, excuse me, Rick, I don't know if he's still around. They already know our workforce numbers. They know what, you know, how it would take to get people into town. So, when we go through all the stuff that we have here in town, I know he had one prospective client in the other day, and he said, now wait a second, I want to show you something. And he brought up this community center, and the guy just kind of sat back in his chair and said, okay, that could be a game changer. This could be why I choose to come to your town. So, seeing that and hearing that, and Bob may be able to speak a little more to that as well, but, you know, people are looking to come to town. They're not looking to come to towns that are, you know, not progressing and not continuing to move forward. They're looking to come to towns that are looking for the future and looking to see what it is they're going to be able to offer their employees.
I think part of that question though is why do we need a $40 million rec center versus a $20 million rec center that is actually used for the community? You're using the extra 20 million for economic development, which is great. I want to see this town develop. But the point is, we're spending taxpayer, you're going to spend tax dollars, sales tax dollars to do that. And I like what Jeff was saying about, ask the companies that are going to benefit. Ask Walmart, ask the companies, the hotels, the restaurants who are in town who will actually benefit from that influx, the gas issues. Ask them to put some skin in the game above and beyond just the sales tax, because this is ridiculous that we need a $40 million rec center. The community for quality of life does not need a $40 million rec center. What you're wanting to do with this rec center is create an economic development entity. And that's what we ought to be doing through what Bob is doing and through what other people in the city are doing in some, instead of taking the tax dollars to create that. You know, Berryville built their rec center for $5 million. Of course, that was in 2003. I recognize inflation and et cetera. But they built it for quality of life, and they have had an amazing feedback in regard to the use of that community. It has really enhanced community of life, so the community life, the quality of life. But you're mixing apples and oranges here. We're talking community life, quality of life, and economic development. Should the two be married, or should we separate those two and look at quality of life for people who have children here and bringing, you know, I think this company that's looking to come in here, they're not looking for how we're spending $40 million for a rec center so that we can bring in all of these teams and have tournaments and concerts and all that. They're looking at what they can do for their children and the workers' children when they come here to live, their quality of life. So, we're trying to marry economic development with community life or quality of life, and it's causing an explosion in the cost of what we can do here in Harrison and have a really good facility. And, but everybody, as you said, everybody can enjoy.
I understand the concern there and the $20 million versus the $40 million. And I put this, and I don't want to put Mayor Rick on the spot, but, you know, they built something for 26 million, and they're already bursting at the seams. You know, how, at that point in time, if you've already got people that are using the facility but then can't use the facility because there's not enough space for them available, that would just be my question of that. Do I think we could build a $20 million facility that would be, look great? Yes. Do I think that we would outgrow it in six months? Yes, I do. I really feel like this facility would be beneficial for people for, you know, 50 years down the line, that there were, that way this facility is still available and it's already paid for at that point in time. And we don't have to come back and ask for more money because we need to expand.
Do you expect this to last for 50 years?
I would hope so, yes. That's why we're putting that money back into it to say, you know, look, in three years, we want to replace the carpet. I believe you're doing that right now. We want to be able to replace the roof in 10 years, so that way we can go and extend that life as long as humanly possible. So, yes, I really feel like we will have this thing last 50 years.
Questions down there?
Yes, sir.
I'm a little different to a lot of these folks. I've been here all my life, and I've always been for everything that was good for Harrison, and I don't think that will ever change. In relationship to what this lady said, my wife and I own three properties, and all are less than one mile from the city limits. And all three properties is just outside the city. Actually, we live in Valley Springs School System, which is down at Salmon Lane. But our child goes to school, our eight-year-old child goes to Eagle Heights. We can't vote, although we own, we own these three properties very closely... We can't vote, although we own, we own these three properties very close to the city. And that, there shouldn't be a county thing, a county vote, it's been a city vote.
I don't know how to respond. It was a statement, so. We just feel like this is something that would be ran by the Parks and Rec Department and therefore we felt it was, we were obligated to put this before the council. They voted to put it in front of the city residents to vote on, and I guess that's kind of where it stands at this point in time.
Let me say one more thing. That also concerns me a little bit. Back when our child was four or five years old and my FedEx, FedEx was sending my wife to Memphis about once a month, I spent a lot of time around the pool there in the hotel and my child spent a lot of time in the pool. Well, her fourth, fifth, her fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth birthday, her party was at the Brandon Boroughs View Center on the city pool. I think that cost was like $150 for, I don't know how many who all ever have anyone to come, I guess, for very reason. But she, first, I have never been in the ladies shower at the city pool. But my information, my source is very reliable. And she tells me that they can't take a shower because the towel is all messed up, the grouts go. And as my eight-year-old child would say, she said, Daddy, it's nasty. Mama puts a towel down for me to stand on while I dry off, and then she comes home and takes a shower. Those kind of things need to be repaired before we settle the county of Boone, $40 million. That's a lot of money, Jerry. That's a lot of money even in the real estate business. And is, does that include, what does that not include? What does tax, what do we not have to pay tax? Do we have to pay taxes on automobiles? If I go down to Bill Woods or Ben Eddings and buy a new vehicle, do I have to pay 1% sales tax on that?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Down through the years, I have never bought a vehicle outside the city of Harrison. I bought a bunch from Bill Woods. I have bought a bunch from Husky Motors. And I just recently bought two from Ben Eddings. And if I had to pay 1%, and I've also bought vehicles from the bank, if I had to pay 1% on all those new vehicles that I have purchased, it would be a lot of money. A lot of money. I think we need to consider that.
I believe there is a cap on that. I'm not exactly sure. The large ticket purchase, I believe there is a cap there of 2,500 or something to where the, you're not paying the full 1% on the full vehicle. It is capped and I don't know that number right off the top of my head, but Kelly?
I can confirm that. I worked at Car dealership and that you are capped on the first $2,500 of a purchase on your city, your municipal tax, as well as your county tax. So no, you will not be charged 7% versus, or 7.5% versus 6.5% under carpet. It's capped.
Well, for a family that earns, unless you're a family that earns $150,000 a year and spends virtually all their money in Harrison, Arkansas, maybe with just the exception of just a little entertainment at the Branson, you're looking at $1,500 a year plus another, plus another $480. So you're looking at roughly $2,000 a year for a family that makes $150 a year. Besides that, people that work don't have time. Now, last night, I took my child to soccer practice. Her mother had something else she had to do. Tonight, my wife and child's not here because they're playing soccer. Tomorrow night is church. Thursday night is logging. Sunday's Friday night, I can't remember what it is, but we have no time for that kind of stuff. I mean, it, the time is all taken up for people like my wife that works 35, 40 hours a week.
On the $150,000, if you spent all $150,000 on taxable use, that would be correct, that $1,500. However, most families make the home payment or car payment or something of that nature. That is not very typical for people to spend all $150,000 on taxable items. So the $1,500 a month plus the $400, or excuse me, per year, I don't anticipate that being the case for most families. Typically, when they're buying taxable goods, it's more like the groceries or clothes. And spending $150,000 on that, I don't think is very typical of people that live in this area.
Hi.
Yes, sir.
I think you're going to depend on people in the county to help support this facility. Am I correct in that?
They will be welcome to come there.
I mean, you told me that there are 50,000, 51,000 people in Benton and your base is on 90,000 people within a 50-mile radius of Harrison. Well, within that 50-mile radius, those, both those people aren't going to be able to vote on this initiative. And my other thing I like to add is why are you having a special election? Why should we hold it during the normal election period and let everybody vote on it? We're all going to be supporting this thing. And I've had people tell me, well, if you don't like being taxed, go to Branson. Well, I don't have to. I don't live in Branson. I don't live in the city either. But I'm going to be paying for this thing.
Why?
Yeah. Yeah, that's my question is why? Why, why don't you put that to a county vote and let everybody in the county, at least in Boone County, vote on this thing, if not everybody in the 50-mile radius?
Again, I, what I mentioned earlier was just that we have the Parks and Recreation Department to run that. It was put to the city council and they agreed to move that on.
Well, Bob did a point that the Parks and Recreation aren't doing a very good job with the city pool here. I've never been there, so I don't know. But if they can do what we have now and take care of the facility, how long are you going to have to expand your Parks and Recreation Department? And what's that going to cost? Even those of us that live in the county who don't get to vote on it. And we all know that special elections, when you have them, they usually pass because everybody turns out are the people that want to have the facility. And the other people are either aren't aware of it, aren't enough here in this room that would oppose it to stop that from passing. Why don't you have a normal general election to stop that far away?
We had tried to make it as close to when the general election time period was. It happens that there is no election this year. What we had mentioned earlier on interest rates is the reason why we would like to move that now. So, but yes, we tried to make it to where the, it was very similar to when the general election was, so it'd be kind of be on people's mind that it is a time of election.
But nobody has time to say you can vote on this initiative?
You are correct, and I, there's nothing I can do about that.
Why, yeah, my question is, why is that way? Why don't you open up even a special election to everybody?
They don't have the ability to, they don't have the ability to call out.
Who does?
Well, not the city.
How about county judges? Does he have it for him?
If I can interject real quick, I've got a gal here that can answer that question real fast.
Let me say something just a second. We need to clear, we need to clear the air, I think, just a little bit. This is a decision evidently that's been made by the Harrison City Council. If you, if you get, and I appreciate that question, but if you get these county involved, you've got to involve the court of court. This is something that the city of Harrison, the city council has voted evidently to do. And so you've got to leave it there. You can't make the court of court do it. And unless the city council withdraws its proposal, I see no way of doing this other thing or adding anybody else. It is a city project. And we need to understand that right now. It's a city project. Whether it's good or bad, it's a city project. The only way that can, this could be changed will be the elected leaders, the city, the city council members with the mayor. Thank you.
Okay. I have a question back to the showers comment. Chuck, are the showers fixed yet? If they're not fixed, can you tell the public why they're not fixed?
In the showers, I'm talking about in the women's shower, there's three showers that are working and three that are not right now. We tried to fix them, but we had a plumber come out and they're so old because they built the plumbing inside of the concrete, we would have to bust out the whole wall to replace those right now. And it's not in our budget this year, but it's something I'm going to have to look at next year. So we have three working out of six. And in the men's side, we have all of them but one and they're over 20 years old. So that's where we're at right now. We don't, we don't have a lot of people that shower right now that use the city pool. So that's been brought to my attention lately, so we've been checking on it and that's been done in the last month. So that's where we're at right now in the women's shower. So it is something I'm going to have to look at and how much the total construction cost of replacing those three showers completely are going to cost. So that's where we're at right now on the, on the pool and shower. I mean, the pool, the city pool is over 20 years old. I mean, I've got a list when I get to talk here in just a second of everything that we've replaced and maintained since I've been here since 2015. So I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. But that's where we're standing right now. I mean, there's lots of assets right now that we've made a plan to replace and we're strategically doing that. So that's where we're at as far as that. But as far as the women's shower, if your pool is open and you're using it, it's like anything else that's being used. If you come out to the Parks and Rec facility, the baseball softball complex, and we're having league games or a tournament, there's going to be trash laying around because there's tons of people there. It's the same thing at the city pool. We maintain, so we clean that three times a day. So, I mean, if you're just looking at it because it's old, that's part of it, but it is. It's over 20 years old and we're doing the best we can to maintain it. So that's where we're at right now in the city pool. And I'm not making excuses. We're going to fix it, but we have to look at it year to year right now.
Well, what are you going to do with the rec center when it's 50 years old?
We actually...
Well, I want to, like I said, when I get to talk, Parks and Rec has never had any maintenance or operations money. The quarter percent is going to go towards that, so that's what we're looking at that for, and that's, that's that part of the tax. That, that's where we're at on that situation. What we generate right now is put right back into our, into our programs and trying to maintain what we have. And it's over, most of it's over 20 years old. So, and I'll talk more about that when I get my opportunity. But addressing the pool, I will say there's three shower heads that are working and three that are not in the women's. That is a fair statement, but that's the reason why.
That Bob was talking about was several months ago. It wasn't just this last week.
I know. I said it was over a month.
Huh?
I, I, I agree that it was over a month. I just found out.
It was several months.
I, I'm just telling you, I just found out about it. We checked it within this month, and that's what we came back with, with the plumber.
All right. I've got another comment back here. Just a minute.
Good evening. A comment, not a question. Unfortunately, I live outside the city limits as well because I tell you, if I could vote on it, I'd vote on it twice. I've lived all over the country. It's the chicken or the egg. We talk about jobs coming to town, but there's nothing to attract them. I mean, in my opinion, we need to make this investment. In terms of paying the taxes, it's not only me going to have to pay the taxes and everybody in this room, but it's those hundreds of teams that are going to come to here and it's all this, all these folks we're going to attract for our community. My kids, by the time this thing is done, will be long gone and will never have the opportunity to use it, but I might. And I think that we need to think long-term about our city, not just short-term. As the mayor said, we're at a historic period for interest rates. If we don't do something soon, we'll never have this opportunity. So my two cents.
I, I, sorry. I do want to talk on sales tax real quick and try to get through my section of it. Sorry, it's so long-winded. But there is two sales tax on the ballot. One is the three-quarter cent for the building up the facilities and the upgrades that you saw and that you'll hear about a little bit. And then there's also a quarter cent sales tax for the operations and maintenance, which Chuck alluded to there, for that total of one cent. We do anticipate that being paid off with the three-quarter cent for the facility in about 12 to 15 years. All that money goes directly to, I believe, our bond counsel, bond attorney. We never see a dime of that at the city as far as that three-quarter cent goes. It all goes towards the payoff of those bonds. We would love to pay that off earlier. We are seeing, you know, an uptick in our sales tax, like I had mentioned. Perrigo did this, I believe. They told us they had a 20-year bond. They paid it off in eight because they had so much stuff come to town. Now, I'm not here telling you we're going to pay it off in eight, but they had that additional economic development that helped them pay that off early, and we would love to see that here and we believe we will. With that being said, I'll kind of turn it back over here to Billy Ray and try to answer any questions if there are any.
Luke, can I ask you something?
Yes, ma'am.
You, I understand, like you're talking about, our school district doesn't have a swim team. And for that matter, I mean, I worked in the Harrison School District, Little Rock, North Little Rock. We didn't have a pool either, didn't have a place for archery, shot put, you know, all those types of things. When these teams come into town and the pool's in use, how is that going to affect the members? And then what kind of fees are going to be charged to the school districts to use it?
I can't promise you what the fees would be for the school district. Whenever those large swim meets come to town, typically it is closed down for either the day or several hours. It's very, there's not as many swim meets as far as weekend goes, but if it's school events, they would be closed down, those pools, that indoor pool would be closed down for the couple hours that it, that those events would be there. We have talked to Coach Pratt and Dr. Pratt to see if it would be possible for us to have a swim team here in Harrison as far as a senior high team. And they did indicate that that was very possible, as well as a diving team to compete and have an additional, you can call it sporting activity or whatever you would like with the AAA, to be able to offer that to these students.
And so then when those schools are having practice too, they use that same facility, so it'll be closed as well?
Typically, when you're doing practice schedules, you're looking at taking up for a swim team, two to three lanes, not all eight or 10 lanes.
Thank you, Luke. Sorry that you're being bombarded.
No, it's fine. Thank you.
Luke, were you going to say something about how Harrison, could you say something right there on your chart, how Harrison would rank or does rank now and how it would rank if both of these pass?
Sure.
Say something about that.
Thank you. What you'll see, can you hear me? What you'll see on this graph here, the first red line here on the left-hand side is where the city of Harrison actually would rank for towns 9,500 to 20,000 in the state of Arkansas. I pull all the sales tax across the state for those sized towns. As you'll see, currently, we are 9%. That is the lowest among those towns. If these pass, you'll see here, we're actually a little bit above average. That goes to the 10%. And once that pays off, unfortunately, I didn't get it on this graph, once the facility would actually pay off, we'd go back to nine and a quarter, which would actually be the third lowest again. So that's kind of where we're at in perspective.
Thanks, Luke. I would like to say right now that I'd like to introduce Christina Huddleston, who's the owner of Inardo's Pizza Billups here in Harrison. And after this, Chuck, I know we've got you down for the next speaker. I would like to take about a 10-minute break after Christina says what she wants to say or asks a question she might want to ask. And then let's, after Christina, and Christina, thank you very much for coming, then let's take about a 10-minute break. And restrooms are out this way. There's a lot of food and drink at the very back. Be very informal. If there's somebody here you haven't met, please go up and say hi to them. Christina Huddleston.
Thank you so much, Billy Ray, for inviting me to come here. I just wanted to say, as an honor of a pizza place, it's exciting to have the, you know, the swim meets come in and the basketball teams and things like that because they love pizza. But one of my concerns, as I live in a county and I don't get to, you know, vote, but I will be paying sales tax, and that's a lot of concern. But he explained, as Billy Ray explained, there's a reason for that, you know? And that's fine. But one of the things I'm concerned with is why is there not a Plan A or B? Because like, well, okay. So I started asking people that come to my restaurants, well, what do you... So I started asking people that come to my restaurants, what do you think? And really, what I gathered was just everybody wanted to put on the brakes when it was the amount. Like that was the clincher, like, whoa, 40 million. I was just curious as to why it's so singular as to that plan? Why is there an A or a B or a C where we might be able to filter out the best one for Harrison? And I'm not sure who to point it to or who would be able to answer it.
Well, you've been doing a great job jumping.
As I mentioned earlier, we did actually have a, a project that was actually significantly bigger. It was at $55 million. We tried to pare that down to what we thought was feasible, but would still also benefit and, and be able to provide everything that Harrison needs and in our, and what we felt. So that's why we have put that out there. As far as being able to vote on multiple options, that gets a little complicated. If you put two or three options out there and two of them get voted yes, then at that point in time, I believe you are required to, to do both if they're vote, both accepted. I could be wrong in that statement, but just having, if you happen to have both of those pass or I guess three, if there was, that would be very hard to, especially if, if we were able to cancel out one, which one at that point in time would you cancel out? That would be very hard to pick out which one that would be. So as far as having options on the ballot, I don't know that that's gonna be feasible to do that. But having just this option, we felt that was the best one for us. Like I said, we did pare it down a little bit to where we thought it would be attractive enough, but also reasonable and facilitate everything that I believe what Batesville's doing along with what we feel our community could do as well.
Thank you.
I just have a statement.
Any questions, comments, suggestions?
I just have a statement. I do feel like there was a B and C plan years ago. With the YMCA, with the previous that Luke had spoken about. I do feel like there were those plans and they didn't feel like that was going to sustain what's going on now. So I do feel like there were plans in place starting before.
Any other questions or comments or suggestions?
I can actually attest to this.
Yes, sir.
I was with the YMCA feasibility study that they presented before Harrison, the fathers at that time. And at that time, I got the requirement that they would not interfere with our programs, with whatever programs they did. Well, the way I understood it after they looked at, this was a possibility. So things changed in cost and what have you and that it no longer became a feasibility estimate. So I was, I was really looking forward to having that come into it, it just didn't work out, so.
By the way, sir, thank you very much for carrying that microphone around.
No problem, just...
He and I don't know each other.
Everybody needs to hear you. I mean, everybody needs to hear you.
We don't know each other, but he's a, he's a good microphone carrier around her.
And I know Luke's saying, carry over to him.
Okay? Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and reconvene, if we will, and reconvene. Let's go ahead and reconvene, if you will. Thank you all very much. At this time, I'd like to introduce Chuck Eddington. I won't say much about Chuck. I've known Chuck and admired Chuck a long time. But Chuck, be sure and we'll let them ask you some questions if they want to afterwards. So Chuck Eddington.
Thank you, Mr. Billy Ray. Um, I've heard a lot of questions and I was trying to wait my turn, so Luke, he, he answered a few of them. But the first thing is I, I do wanna explain how Parks and Rec works. I do answer to a parks commission and also report to the city council and the mayor. So I kinda have three bosses, the way I consider it. But we all, I feel like we all work together, so I kinda wanted to put that out there. They do have some, they, they give me my allotment and then we make our budget and my commission approves it for the year. So I kinda wanted to put that out. A lot of questions I'm hearing is about, you know, how, if, how can we afford a $40 million facility or maintain it if we can't maintain what we have now? So when I got the job, I'm going to be five years in January, the first, one of the first things we did was we came up with an asset replacement list and like a five-year strategic plan on how to replace some of these assets that need to be replaced. But as far as maintenance goes, in 2015, we actually re, we rebuilt two of the fields out of the complex and resurfaced them to better our tournaments. And in 2015, we also had to replace both air conditioning units at the youth center. So that was a big expense. In 2016, we had to replace fencing out on a couple outfield at the baseball softball complex and we had to make it... And we had to make a new office at the youth center for my sports coordinator to work out of. We also had to replace the pool line. So that's what I came into. In two thousand seventeen, we built a new bathroom and storage facility at the sports complex for better access for where we were playing out there. We also repainted all the gym floor in the youth center and the walls and replaced all the trim. And also in two thousand seventeen, we replaced all the safety pads on the wall at the youth center. We replaced two light poles that had to be replaced for us to play on one of our fields at the complex because of safety issues. We also built four new press boxes that had to be replaced. We added, re-surfaced all of our infields with conditioner. We renovated two soccer fields by re-screwing them and re-seated one soccer field at the soccer complex. In two thousand eighteen, we purchased two six-seat golf carts so we could transport our elderly and handicapped from field to field out of the complexes. And we use, also use those at community events. Also in two thousand eighteen, we replaced all the stalls in the bathroom and the shower rooms at the pool. So those are pretty much brand new. We installed new tile flooring in both shower rooms at the pool. We installed new carpet in the pool room where we have our birthday parties at the pool and the offices at the youth center. We upgraded the youth center marquee signs so our advertisements will look better on people that support us. We put a new soccer, a new concession stand roof at the soccer and AC unit. We replaced all the pool buckets and repainted all the pool fixtures in two thousand eighteen. In two thousand nineteen, we added a new ADA accessible path in one of our fields that we had to have. We purchased all new pool lounge chairs and we just purchased new playground equipment that we're going to be replacing in Minneharris Park to some of our playground equipment that's, needs to be replaced. And we've added two practice boards at the tennis courts at the request of some citizens. So all that's been done. We talk about maintenance, that, some of that was in the budget, some of that was not in the budget. But that's kind of the request I get. Talking about the shower room, shower fixtures and the girls. When I found out about it, we researched and tried to fix it. We had tried to fix it many times before I was told. But I don't know if you understand plumbing, but when you concrete around the plumbing, you basically have to redo it. It's a big project. It's not something I can fix overnight. So we're looking into that and that's something I'll have to talk about to the commission and city council in the near future. But what we're here to talk about tonight is the community center and the updates on our facilities. What I want to talk about first is the community center where Luke's pointing the laser pointer. He's kind of talked about, on this side of the building, we're going to have four multipurpose courts. And all these courts, we're going to be able to play basketball, volleyball. If you haven't heard, we've started offering pickleball now, which is the fastest growing sport in America. That's something new that we're doing. We have Tuesday nights open for that. We'll also be able to host events in this. Those four courts will be able to seat up to three thousand people. We'll also have a walking track. If he can point, you can kind of see it in the bottom picture on the right. There'll be a walking track that's above every one of these four courts. That's over an eighth of a mile long and it'll be two to three lanes wide. A lot of people have came to me since I've had this job wanting to, something like this where they can get out of the weather instead of walking around Lake Harrison. They can get inside and be walking or jogging on an indoor track. We do not have that now at the youth center, so this is a need that I've heard about. This is why this is in the project. You know, we talked about tournaments. The four courts, one of the reasons why we went with four courts, I know baseball has three. We felt like we needed to go with four because I would like a court to be open as much as possible to the public. If you're buying a membership, I want to make sure we have a court accessible. Now, will that be the case all the time in the tournament? Maybe not, but during the week for sure. And I want to talk about the time. We're wanting to have this facility open from five AM to nine PM. Right now, our facility's only open eight AM to five PM, as far as when we're open to the public. Now, we keep kids till about five thirty till their parents pick them up, but as far as our daily operations is from eight to five. So we're going to be expanding that hours. So on that side, I want to talk a little bit about the tournaments too and the economic impact. Let's talk about the four courts. We don't really have, we're going to try to host volleyball tournaments, which we've never had. We've already, I've already talked to some organizations about doing that. But let's talk about basketball. We started hosting big basketball tournaments and a couple of months ago, I had to turn down an eighteen tournament. Because we don't have the air conditioning facilities in the summer to host it. I got with Matt Bell and did the math, that cost the city about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue in one weekend by not being able to host that eighteen tournament. That's a lot of money and that's something we could very easily do with this facility. Also partnering with the schools. So that, we do have a good relationship with our schools and that would also help us on this side. Banquets, concerts, anything we can do, community events, that's what we would host on this side of the building. On the other side of the building, of the entrance, that would be the Parks and Rec offices and classrooms and meeting rooms and a fitness center. The fitness center will be mostly introductory fitness equipment. We're trying not to put a lot of free weights in there, so it'd just be like treadmills and ellipticals and resistance machines. In the meeting rooms and classrooms, we're really looking at expanding our youth programs. We'll be using these classrooms and meeting rooms for our after-school program and our summer rec. What we're trying to do is branch out and try to offer more things now than just sports for kids. I don't know if you've heard about esports and e-gaming, but we're actually hosting tournaments in that right now. We just had a Fortnite tournament last weekend, had over forty participants. So, I mean, it's growing and actually in the high schools now, there's actually gaming teams that are playing against other schools. So it's, it's growing. And actually, I, I heard the other day at one is that the average gamer nowadays is thirty-eight years old. So not only looking at the youth, we're looking at middle-aged adults that, that want to play these games and are participating in these activities. Also, these classrooms can be used for bingo nights, bridge nights, mungo nights, anything that the community can use these rooms for, that's what we want them used for. Any activities we can get going with these. That's why we want to have this space allotted for that. A lot of people ask me, what's going to happen to the youth center we have now? We're going to keep that building, using it just as it is now for basketball, birthday parties, things like that. We're also looking at doing a club saw league, which is an indoor soccer league. Adding more leagues and things for our kids and our community that can get in when the weather's bad outside. We're also looking at putting some roll-out turf and some drop nets in there for, for indoor soccer, baseball and softball practices. Because we're very limited right now on those facilities in certain times of the year for practices. I heard someone ask earlier about the existing pool. What we've talked about is what Luke said, we're looking at maybe an outdoor court, all-purpose court. Or we're looking at maybe just additional parking for activities going on at the youth center. The next thing I want to talk about is the existing sports complex, baseball, softball. We're looking at number one, adding parking. So we would move all of our T-ball fields, which is on the right side of our parking lot when you pull in. We're going to move all of our T-ball out to the soccer complex where we play Little Sticks right now. So that won't be a big change for us and we're looking at adding that parking on that side of the parking lot. Because if you've been out to our complex now on our league nights, we're at max capacity. And even our turn, pass the apartment complex. Capacity, so we're looking at adding more parking there. Also, we're looking at turf and infields. Turf is, we go anywhere now when people are trying to host tournaments and we host a lot of tournaments. We hosted over thirty-five tournaments last year. We were lucky this year, we only lost one big tournament, but the year before we lost three because of weather. When you have turf, you don't lose these tournaments. And as you know, I just said that the eighteen tournament, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on just one weekend. That's what kind of money would be missing, but we can keep. Because when you add turf, you can play on this while it's raining, as long as it's not lightning. That would be the only thing that stops us from playing. You know, the high school, I talked to the coaches and Dr. Pratt, they use our facilities. The high school field, softball, baseball uses our facilities. And sixty percent of their practices in February and the beginning of March was in our parking lot because our facility was too wet or unsafe to get on. So we would like to have this turf and that's the reason why we're looking at doing those infields. To help us with tournaments and that, and that cause for our community schools and our kids and our district. So, and we're also looking at adding, updating our concessions and bathrooms. And adding covered bleachers, which is a very much necessity when you have tournaments. Because it is a safety issue with foul balls being hit. We do not have covered bleachers right now. So we're looking at covering our bleachers to keep our watchers safe during the game. The next thing I want to talk about is the outdoor pool. There's some pictures at the bottom of the screen. On our outdoor pool, we're going to have a multiple slide system with zero entrance. We will also have a diving well and we'll have a lazy river, which a lot of people are excited about. That will be the three big things we have. Now, I want to talk about, somebody said something, I think it was Mr. Bob, about a pool party. The months we're open, we're open from, from May till Labor Day. I think we open Memorial Day and we close Labor Day. That's how, that's our functioning time right now is the pool. When we open up in May for registration for pool parties, in two days, we're, we're at full capacity on our pool parties. We have to turn people away. This would give us the opportunity where we wouldn't have to tell kids that they can't have their birthday party at our city pool. As Luke said, some kids have their birthdays in the months that our, where our pool's not even open. This would give us the capability of hosting these events. We don't like to tell people no, but it gets to the point where we just can't function and have it open to the public too. So this would help in that area. I'm going to let Luke talk about the indoor pool, which he kind of did anyway. So if, we can ask questions about that, if you have any more questions about the indoor pool. But as far as the facility goes, and Wade's going to talk about the trails when he, when it's his turn to talk. But as far as the facility updates and things of that nature, that, that's what I have to say. But I do want to end on this, talking about tournaments. The last three years that we've brought in, advancing through tournaments and to the city, over two million dollars, approximately about two million dollars in revenue. Just the parks and the tournaments we've hosted. And we're adding new tournaments every, every year with the Fortnite, the gaming tournaments. We're having a pickleball tournament coming up and I think October twenty-sixth, if I think Austin told me right, he's my sports coordinator. We're going to have a disc golf tournament where we're using the Winkler Center disc golf and the college's course. We'll be partnered with them. So we've got a lot of new things going on in town. It's not just sports, it's, it's things that people, all ages can do. So that's what we're trying to go to. And that's one reason why we're, we're trying to push this. Because I, I don't know how many people have come to my office and, you know, that's what it's called right now. They call it a youth center because a lot of our older generation did not have anything to do in our youth center because it's packed all the time with kids. So we're looking at something for everyone and that's the slogan on our, on this project. So I'll open it up to any questions someone might have about any of the facilities or any other questions.
What's your current revenue source?
Current revenue, we get an allotment from the city council of five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And the rest of our income comes from our youth programs and our leagues and our sponsorships.
None of it comes from business?
The sponsorships of teams and that.
You're asking us to spend forty million dollars to make the hotel in the hotel people rich and all they can do is pay nine percent tax. Like she says, why don't you put a little skin in the game for them? I mean, you know, we're spending money so somebody else can make money.
We will have the ability to offer corporate sponsorships and helping with replacement of some of that stuff as well. I believe those people would be some big players in that as far as sponsoring those facilities, whether it be a gym floor or a, something to do with the pool. But I do believe those corporate sponsorships will be offered and hopefully, but that just won't pay for everything as far as operations and maintenance. It's, it's kind of small potatoes whenever you're talking about what it would cost for utilities and salaries and stuff to continue this running.
What I'm talking about though is not necessarily money for the maintenance, it's the money to build that darn thing. Go to them and have them commit, not, not ask them to donate. Put a commitment on it, say, okay, we're going, an extra five percent or an extra something to build this darn thing because you're going to benefit from it. You benefit from it more than I will, as a guy who's paid for it.
Again, I, I think that that would be an opportunity for them to help with rebuilding some of that. I don't know that that's going to be enough money to actually build a facility of this nature.
More than just voluntary.
Is there, is there any chance that you could use, and I know this has been in discussion lately, it's where I graduated high school from. Can you not use those facilities?
We did, that was one of the first locations we looked at with the architects. And I'm going to let Wade get into more of that when he talks. So if you want Wade, till Wade gets up, he can answer that question about as far as the location of the junior high. Yes, sir.
Yes, you talked about the importance of bringing tournaments to town and I agree with that. It brings a lot of people into town and spend a lot of money, not just at the tournament, but hotels, restaurants and everything else. I don't know whether it was parks or the school district, but recently, they had a huge basketball tournament that had to take their tournament to Mountain Home.
That was the eighteen tournament that I had to turn away because of facility space, sir.
Did we not have any facility, what space in town that they could have had?
Not, not air conditioning. That was the problem. They didn't, it was in the summer, they, we didn't have enough air-conditioned gyms they sent to, to host it, even with the school.
I was told that they weren't allowed to use some of the facilities that were air-conditioned.
The only one we were not going to be allowed to use was the arena, the middle arena at the school. The rest of the school facility. Yes, sir.
Have an opportunity to build something like this and then do it regret it.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On your projected schedule, revenue and expenditures, you show salaries as an expense of four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars roughly. Is that just for staff or would that be for increased personnel presence in the maintenance side of things? Or can the maintenance for this new facility be completed with the staff that the city already has?
We, I'll let Luke answer because he's the one who made the budget, but.
Excuse me. We, we looked at Batesville staffing requirements and what they had for that and we actually built that in. So you'll see some kind of split between what we have currently, our salaries, and that's what you'll see in that first line. Then we'll have some community center, that's what the CC salaries is for. So all that staffing was based off very similar amounts to what Batesville had. And so that, all those numbers are in there. The work, the current one that you see though is for what we currently have versus the community center.
So, so the city would require an increased maintenance staff to, to have stewardship of this facility?
Yes, sir. If we open from five AM to nine PM, we'll probably have two different shifts of maintenance going on instead of just one like we do now.
Hello, my name is Chris Head, Harrison City Council Board One, Position One. And I've heard a lot of back and forth here tonight and I just want to say that I believe Chuck does a fine job as Parks and Rec Director. And the man, he reports to us on city council and he does a lot of things on a shoestring budget. And I've watched him do a lot of projects where he had to shuffle things and move things around just to be able to afford to do them. And he supports our children in their activities and keeps those things going. So to say that they're not doing a fantastic job would not be the truth. So to say that they're not doing a fantastic job would not be the truth. And I also want to say that I've heard a lot of comments here tonight about, well, who's gonna get rich from it? I think everybody needs to step back and take a minute to realize that higher water races everybody's boat and we're all gonna gain from this move. We're all gonna have better quality of life, we're all gonna have better facilities, we're all gonna have more opportunities. And I think it's come to a point in America as a whole where we try to sort out the who's and the haves and the have-nots and all these other things. And we need to come together as a community and do something positive for our community.
Oh, I just have a quick question. If you're gonna have tournaments and things like that in this facility, are you gonna have food and beverage booths that you can sell and profit from that?
Yes, sir, we have concessions. Yes, sir.
I do have a question just right quick. It came to my mind, I'm sorry. If you do rent this facility out, is alcohol gonna be available? If you rent it out to different, like say you have a concert or something, are you going to have alcohol in a rec center?
No, no, you go.
I think it's supposed to be shot if the answer's wrong, I'm not real sure there, but.
We haven't planned for that one.
You know, that's something that will probably be open to council approval at that point in time or and also Parks and Rec at that time as well. But I think that option is probably on the table, but it's something that would need to be discussed in another maybe open forum to see if that was an opportunity that wants to be pursued going forward.
I couldn't answer that question either, it'd have to be approved by my commission and city council.
Thank you all for sticking with us this long. Hopefully we'll get to Mayor Rick here in a minute.
I've been waiting for him too, so that's pretty good. I'll second what Chris said about Chuck. Chuck has, in the last five years, busted his butt on a shoestring budget and he's really, guys, you don't know how much work he puts into that youth center and bringing our teams and people into this town. But on the other part of talking about what we can do for a community, each and every one of us is getting to where we turn off the news. They're talking about zero deficit, a reverse curve on the interest rates. You know, you start listening to that and two point two, yeah, that's pretty low. If the government goes to zero or goes to reverse, it's not that good. To do something good for a community, I understand two point two, boy, that's cheap money. There's a reason why it's two point two and we're on a fragile base. If we were talking about this after the two thousand twenty election, I might have a little more confidence in saying, hey, this'd be great. I'll be the first one to stand up and say, this would be awesome for Harrison if we can afford it. You know, the thing is down the road, if we can't afford it, we still have to pay for it.
You got an answer, Rick?
I just wanted to comment as far as the can afford it or not, the twelve to fifteen years that we put out there, that's based off of really no growth at all in our sales tax revenue. So even if we were to fall into some sort of recession, which we have in the past, we went down approximately two percent, but actually gained that back in less than three years. So as far as not affording it, I don't know that the sales tax would diminish enough to where it would actually, even if we were in a recession, continue to go past that twelve to fifteen year mark according to what we have currently as far as our revenue growth.
Yeah, I think that was really interesting news that we discovered in oh-nine and ten, we dropped a total of two percent and you know what happened to the rest of the country? So even during some bad times, we seem to do pretty good around here.
On the, on this year alone, Luke?
Yes, sir.
How many times this year did we fall below the expectations per month on sales tax?
I believe maybe one or two and it was first in January, but we've actually had five out of the top ten months ever this year in our sales tax. So we've been doing really good.
Hey Chuck, do you have numbers on, and I don't know if I'm putting you on the clock and maybe Mayor Rick could say this too, but do you have numbers in your head about approximately the number of or the percentage of out of the city limits people, county, surrounding county people that are coming to Harrison and to our parks to use them? You know, that do live outside city limits?
I don't have all the numbers, but I mean, in our leagues, we're, I mean, our baseball and softball, most of our youth that participates is from the county. We probably have, we have almost five hundred kids in baseball and softball. I think we were around eighty in volleyball this year, this season. And a lot of the county have teams in our, in our adult leagues as well. We're averaging above fifty participants per league. And then when you get into our youth, we're about five hundred average on our, on our other sports. You know, football's a little, with flag and tackle, I think around a hundred and fifty. So you know, a lot of those teams are from the county.
I just wanted to make the point because I know in my volleyball program, I have people that come from Marshall, from Alton, from Berryville, from Branson to come here to play our league. And you know, most people wouldn't have a clue that that, there's that many people around that are looking for this.
Yeah, we just, we just had a new basketball league. It's called Be Elite League. We actually came together with Elite Basketball. We have over, we have forty teams in this league of just fifth and sixth graders and they're from all the areas surrounding schools that are coming to Harrison now on Saturdays for the next five weeks to play in basketball. So they're using our facilities partnered with the school and that we're playing all these games in Harrison. So that's almost three hundred, three hundred and fifty kids participating and I think only six of those teams are from Harrison. So that's what we're doing and that's new this year, so.
I've got one here. We had this kind of wrong Chuck, but you were talking about that, Alpine, Valley Springs, Bourbon, they use our facilities at the high school.
Yes, sir.
For girls softball and baseball, so yes, they're involved in our programs.
Yes.
All these teams, will they be generating revenues for this facility? Do they pay a fee to use these facilities?
They rent, the high schools rent our facilities and then the youth.
All these other youth teams?
The youth pay a league fee to use it. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Angela Olson and Angela is an instructor at North Arkansas College. Angela, if you want to come up here, it's great, if you want to stay there, it'd be fine. Thank you.
As Dr. Lewis said, I'm Angela Olson. I'm actually a retired school teacher and administrator and I'm just here in my own accord, so I'm not representing the educational institutions that I work for, anything along those lines. I do want to thank Dr. Lewis and his team group for providing this venue so that the community can have an opportunity to, you know, be heard and to learn about those that are, things that are happening. I also want to thank Mayor Jackson as well as Mayor Crockett for being here so that we can see that there's transparency and people are trying to get the word out and share all the different points. I've already asked a question about, and Mr. Eddings answered in terms of tournaments and how that would play into the different type of membership, how that would balance out. And with that said, some of the other comments that I've received, just when they heard I'd be a moderator, kind of echoed what Mayor Crockett said. They, the current public facilities, individuals have expressed concern simply about, like if I take my child to the park and we're playing, there's no restroom, or if we have to leave to go to the restroom, we have to come back. They're looking at those free types of facilities that we have, even at the soccer fields. I mean, I understand we used to have kind of the little porta potties, but those have been removed as well. Some other things that people talked about was like the timely removal of debris when there are storms and things on the walking trails. And another issue is about safety, which would be typically provided by the public when people are at courts or working in the fields or just walking around the track, especially at night. I've had the question about the vicinity in terms of the junior high, which Mr. Eddings just kind of addressed that and I understand that Mr. Phillips will talk about that a little bit more. As Mr. Pinson said, I've had people talk about the bathrooms at the current youth center and those types of things. Let's see what else I've got here. I think basically the gist of it is that they're concerned if we have a newer, bigger project and at those existing facilities, if they're not being maintained well now, what's gonna happen in the aftermath? And Mr. Eddings addressed a little bit of that in terms of the youth center. The other issues there will come down to like cost of membership with the rec center. People say, if I could afford that, I would be going to a gym already. And they, I agree with why a lot of people have said that there, Harrison does deserve something and something good for the community, but there was just, there's just quite a few common folks basically who are just concerned that if we're not maintaining those existing sites and we get something new, what's gonna happen to those existing sites that are free to me and I can't afford to take my children to another place? So it's more just a comment and it kind of echoes a lot of what we've already heard.
Thank you, Dr. Olson. Any questions or comments for Angela? If you look on your agenda, our next person would be Wade Phillips. Wade, and again, I want to stress, your title has changed, is that right? Chief Operating Officer for the city of Harrison, Wade Phillips.
I've been called many things.
You've been called many things, thank you.
That's fine. I get through the middle. Dr. Lewis, I appreciate you giving us this opportunity. For the sake of all of our bedtimes, I'm gonna try and not take up too much time. You know, as the mayor said earlier, I'm pretty familiar with a lot of the parts of the project mainly because, you know, when it moves forward, I'm gonna be the one that's responsible for administering, overseeing all the different contracts that are gonna be included with this, from the architects to the contractors, things like that. But what I'm gonna talk about tonight is, and you'll have to excuse me, my allergies are really bad right now. Tonight I'm gonna talk a lot about trails. I've pretty much been the main advocate in the room as we've developed this project from the time that I was brought in. I make sure that we get trails and I've advocated for trails in the community since I moved back here in two thousand eleven. We've had a little bit of success. I bring it up to council every few years, brought it up with all three mayors that I've worked for, but everybody seems to support it. Then we start talking about costs and it gets to where, you know, is the community really ready to invest in an actual trail system? The trail we have around Lake Harrison right now is heavily used by a lot of people. I think as we expand our trails, we'll get more people on them. One thing that I think's kind of changed in the community is, I apologize, I think people are seeing what other communities have done with their trails. I'm gonna use Northwest Arkansas as a prime example because what they've done over the last decade, they've been working on the trails for probably two, three decades, but this last decade, they've built a momentum that is actually becoming a standard set across the country. There are people from all over the country looking at what those communities got together and have done specifically with the race back green line. So when we were looking at this project, I kind of had the idea that, you know, we're wanting to do a master trail plan, we're wanting to get this stuff laid out and it would be a perfect backbone to a full trail system in the community if we could run from Lake Harrison up to this new community center. It would also tie into the existing baseball fields and sports complex. It would set us up to where we could expand this out and hit schools, neighborhoods, commercial areas, retail establishments. There's a lot of benefits on trails in communities and I'm gonna hit on a few of them. You know, one of the first things that any community that's really made an investment in trails will tell you is it just makes it a better community to live. It encourages outdoor recreation, it encourages healthy lifestyles and it does strengthen local economies. Now, I know trails are not gonna create jobs, but they create activity in places where there's usually not. What we're looking at doing on this trail is running along Dry Jordan. Can you imagine some of those commercial establishments as we go along Main Street and through those areas? All of a sudden, we've got a whole bunch of people, pedestrians, bicyclists, skateboarders, you know, any type of non-motorized transportation up and down through there, they're gonna have the opportunity to use those establishments. You know, you can also use trails to promote and preserve historic and, historical and culturally important places. You know, one of the plans on our master trail plan, it won't be included in this project, that was to tie this into Baker Prairie so that people are actually being able to interact with Baker Prairie more often while they're out jogging, biking or whatever it is. Specifically what we're proposing in this project, I'm gonna give you some details because a lot of people don't fully understand what we're wanting to do or they're a little bit off on some of the details. What we're looking at is about a three mile long trail, minimum ten foot paved width. I'm hoping to do twelve, but construction costs are a little bit difficult these days and that's one of the things that we have to deal with. But you know, that ten foot width is your minimum that you need for a true multi-use trail. It will be concrete is the plan. It's more durable than asphalt long-term for that type of sidewalk in facility. It will be a lit trail. That will drive costs quite a bit, but I don't have any interest in extending our trail any farther north without getting it lit to where it's safe. It will not actually be built in the middle of Dry Jordan, I've heard that a lot. If you take a look at the, a few years ago, we were actually lucky enough to get a grant to start this trail heading north away from the lake. The idea of running along Dry Jordan's been around, actually, Ken Bailey many years ago really put a lot of effort into trying to get that going and so we started with his plan a few years ago. If you look at what we've done there, yeah, we're down in the creek, we'll be going to bridges, but as soon as we're under those bridges, we're bringing it up. And that'll be the plan on this trail here. I don't, my guys are gonna be the ones that have got to go out and clean it up every time after, after a storm, so I don't really want any more of it down in that creek than it really needs to be. We will have to do some at-grade crossings where we can't go under bridges. We do plan on doing enhanced pedestrian protection at those. Most common way is pedestrian actuated, flashlights to let motorists know that, you know, they're in an area with a trail and there's activity on that trail so that they can be more cautious. And other items, you know, that we are planning along this trail, we do want to do some trailheads. You know, these are locations where people can park and access the trail. Obviously, down at the park around Lake Harrison, you know, that's a trailhead right now for our existing trail. I've got a few other locations that if I can get, you know, work it out with the landowners, we'd like to have other small parking lots, places where people can access the trail. Water fountains along the trail, rest areas, picnic areas along the trail. I mean, it just, it needs to be something more than just, you know, clearing a path through the woods. It needs to be a true multipurpose trail that people can use easily, affordably. And also one other, one of the other goals is that we are gonna build this with accessibility in mind, you know, so that people of varying capabilities will actually be able to benefit from the trail. And so I had a few other things, but I'm gonna go ahead and move on to Dr. Olson's question, or the question that came up about the junior high. Junior high location is wonderful for a lot of reasons. It's downtown, it's where we're used to having stuff like that. It's also the buildings themselves, we're not gonna be able to salvage those to use for this. There's a reason the school district moved out. It's not necessarily that they wanted something new and shiny. It's not necessarily that they wanted something new and shiny, it's that those buildings were not safe for their students and staff any longer. I mean, those were unhealthy buildings for them to be in. But even if, you know, we took the property, we tore the buildings down, I'm going to look up some numbers that I brought specifically for this subject, over 75% of that site is in floodplain. So I don't really want to put a multimillion-dollar facility of this nature on a floodplain. 14% of that site is in a regulatory floodway. Now, floodway, we can't, even if we wanted to, we can't. We can't build it. That's the area that's reserved for floodwaters to move. That's just something we would not be able to do. So basically, we're looking at about seven to eight acres of usable property at that site. We need, what, 10 to 15? About 15 is what we need. So the site just doesn't work with what we're trying to do. So that's, yeah, the mayor really, really wanted us to put it down there. And he asked me, I don't know, every other day for a lot of time. So, yeah, I mean, it's, like I said, it's a great location just because we all like the idea of being there. We like the idea of being next to Creek to Creek, but unfortunately, being next to Creek creates the problems with the floodway and the floodplain. Was I answered that pretty well?
I guess my comment on that would be, you're saying that that's in the floodplain, but yet lower than that, we have new soccer fields, we have new session stands, we have built things.
Parks, parks facilities, parks facilities aren't allowed, and actually, it's probably about the best use you can get in a floodplain, because they're easy to recover. An aquatic center and a community center are not like, you know, soccer fields, or just a simple block building that just has to be washed out and cleaned out after the floods go through. You look around communities all over the place, they use their floodplain for parks, and they use their parks for stormwater detention, too. That's pretty common, just because it's easy to recover as opposed to a large multimillion-dollar Also, you know, if anybody has any questions about the, you know, the process of going through construction or the trails in general, I'd be happy to answer them.
The question I have for you, Luke, is, all right, Wade, is you started off with Northwest Arkansas trails. Can you name me two of the towns that wasn't infused by Walmart grants in Northwest Arkansas for their trail systems?
Well, Walmart invests heavily in trail systems, yes.
And why aren't they in Harrison?
Well, one, we're outside their area, two, we've not shown them that we're willing to put skin in the game. I mean, and I, and, you know, that's a soapbox issue for me. We do want, you know, we want people to help. We want, we want these grant funds. I apply for grants all the time. One of the things they look at is, well, what are you doing to help make our money go further than we invest in you? So, yeah, we're going to have to put skin in the games, I think, with trails in order to get, get the Walton Foundation and some of these organizations over here. We are a little bit outside their area, though. It would help a lot if we were in, within Washington counties, because they do invest heavily over there.
Second thing I'd like to say real quick for you, sir, just a second, is I've known you since you've started at the, at the city public works and that. You have done an awesome job for this town. I do trust you and everything you do, so I do appreciate it.
Appreciate that, really. Enjoy working with you on lots, too, so.
Where does that trail start and where does that end?
Where it starts, I guess on the south, would be R B S Bank in downtown. We built our trail up to where it ends kind of behind R B S Bank, they're right at North Side Church of Christ, if you're familiar with where that is. As you're going down Prospect by there, you can see where it crosses. And then it will end at the new community center and existing baseball fields.
Like a rest park road?
No, we're going to go under bridges where we can, and then we'll do at-grade crossings where we don't have the opportunity to do that, or we'll use lighted intersections where we can put pedestrian movements in.
Wade, I've got a question on that. Are you going to have benches along the way? You talked about picnic table.
Yeah, I would like to have picnic, picnic areas and benches along the way, yes.
I know the fact that Fairfield Bay up in Elbury Clinton's kind of what's called a benchmark program they're fixing to start up, is working on grants for Native American recognition for tribes going through. But it's a great idea as far as a benchmark where you get, some people can donate like a bench to help put in for the trails. I just wonder if you had something like that going?
Yeah, we do plan on putting in benches, and, you know, we're going to be, you know, I'll be approaching our niche groups that are really on board with trails, the goblin clubs, walking clubs, cycling clubs. Yeah, we're going to have opportunities to sponsor some of these areas, obviously, mainly to help with cost, because, you know, adding those types of amenities do drive up the cost of the trail.
Can you speak to the distance as far as if we started all the way at the end?
Speak to the distance?
As far as if we started at the soccer complex, went all the way out, and then back, is that 10 miles, is that approximately what we're looking at?
Yeah, it'll be close to 10. It'll probably get a little bit short. I had to think about the, where are the 5Ks?
Didn't need to put you on the spot. I didn't know it's about a three-mile track currently that we have, adding on to three-mile, except for there is a little bit of loop.
Yeah, we've got the loop, whatever, you're doing a 5K down there, but, yeah, it should get us pretty close to 10. You know, once I can get it connected to Goblin and a trail on Goblin Drive, then we can add a little bit more to it, so.
So you have any thoughts?
I have no question.
Yes, sir.
Should this pass, the voters choose to go for it, from the time that it passes until the time that you have a set of working blueprints that contractors can bid from, how long will it be before you have a set of working blueprints after it passes?
For all phases of the project, something this size, you're probably looking at nine to 12 months for any firm to work through it. There'll have to be some, kind of some brainstorming sessions. You know, we plan on doing some brainstorming sessions with the public as we are going into final design, to get input on some of the finer details of the elements of the project. That's information that the architects are going to need in order to get us to a point that we've got an actual set of construction plans and specifications, so, yeah.
So one month to a year for the print?
Yeah.
And then, is there an anticipated construction timeline?
Approximately two years is what you're looking at on something like this. Of course, many things can, can change construction schedules, as we know.
Total project or just your project?
Total project. I'm talking total project.
Quick question for you. Have you ran a contingency on cost overruns on the project? Issues of labor force, your contractors overseeing the project, you know, like the high school, people can overlook cost overruns in the school, and they're more forgiving. They're not going to be on this. So I'm asking, have you considered these things? Have you, do you have an outlook on it? Because, you know, you can figure right now, and at the end of that two-year window, you know, we went through an influx last year of material costs going up, and they finally came back down nine months later. But do you have a prospectus on that?
The architects have done their best to, one, project, you know, what construction cost inflation is going to be over the year. I mean, obviously, they don't have a crystal ball, but they can look at what's, you know, what's happened. There are contingencies built into costs, there is a contingency fund in the project. And then, as far as the total cost, there's probably no more better cost control for a city than doing a bond project. It is, you know, the available funds, once the bond are issued, will be 39.9, and that is a set number. It will not, it can't go up. We can't issue more bonds, we can't extend the tax, that's done. So cost control will be very important in this project. You know, one of the, one of the things that we talked to architects about when we were looking at them was, tell us what you've done to control costs. And so, we're going to be looking to those design professionals that have experience doing these type of facilities, to make sure that we are aware of the changes in construction costs, so that we can, we can make those decisions to make sure that, you know, at the end of the day, we don't get a bid price that's 3 million higher than what we can afford. And, you know, we've talked about bids, that's the traditional form of procurement for construction. One thing that we will probably look at doing is using a construction manager at risk. And what you do is you select a construction manager that's, you know, based off of their qualifications, it's not a bid. You negotiate the scope and the total project cost with them before you sign a contract, and then you bring them on early in the design process. So then, what you have, you've got a contractor, and you've got a designer working together to make sure that the scope is met and it's under budget. I mean, we haven't made that decision, but I'll probably be promoting it a little bit as we move forward. It gives us...
Wait, has we entered key contract?
The way construction manager at risk works is, they don't build it. They manage the construction, and they are, and when you say at risk, it's, they are at risk to bring it in at that agreed-upon budget. They will bid out all the individual elements. They will have the right to bid on those elements, but they're going to have to compete with everybody else. It's, it's not a new method of procurement for construction bids. You know, over the last few years, it's become more common in Arkansas, mainly because procurement laws have changed to allow it. A lot of cities are moving to that.
Thanks, Wade. Next, I'd like to ask Don Price. Don, you're the owner of Three Anytime Fitnesses, is that correct, throughout? How many are in, one in Arkansas?
One in Arkansas, two in Texas.
One here. Don Price, if you'd like to come up here, it'd be fine, if you'd like to stay there.
Thank you for coming tonight. I think you probably have come farther than anybody, I think, here to be here. I drove a long way to get here. I just want to say that, first of all, $40 million is a lot of money. It's a whole lot of money. And the reason I'm in business is because of the town I was living in, and still do, years ago, had a nice city-run recreation center that was donated, by the way, by a family in the town, with the help of a lot of people in the town that donated money as well. They all worked together to build that, and it was a shining star in that town. It didn't attract any businesses that I ever knew about, or any doctors. Being in the medical field, I was attracted to that town because of the practice, not because of the Kane Center, as it was called. And so, we went in business with Anytime Fitness in that town because of some issues of that location, that there was constantly issues of not being kept up, even though it got grant after grant from the Kane Foundation. And it just never seemed to be taken care of. And so, we went into business because it was always dirty, quite frankly. And I'm sad to tell you that two and a half years ago, they closed their doors because they couldn't meet budget, even with grants continuing from the Kane Foundation. And as I look at these numbers that are before us, I see some things that, as a business owner, would really concern me. The salaries of $465,000, I would hate to be responsible for that personally. But that would mean, based on memberships, if you look on the budget, memberships are to generate $802,000. That would be about $67,000 a month from memberships. And according to the rates here, that would be about 3,300-plus people to be members to generate that $802,000 a year. The national average from, according to the International Health Bracket Sports Association, which is the authority for fitness centers, says that 16% of the population will be a member of a fitness center. So I know you're jostling some numbers around there, but you think about that, to get Batesville's 8,700 members, that just is totally off the chart. So that is an anomaly. That skews the average way away, and I don't think you can expect to see that any more than I can say that my locations are doing as well as the top 80-time fitness locations. Demographics have a lot to do with it. Other available fitness centers has a lot to do with it. So I'm looking at this going, if I'm relying on these numbers to get roughly 3,500 members a month, or a month, to pay this kind of money, I'm not going to do that venture, because I've been in this town two and a half years with my center, and I can tell you, it's, those are not my numbers. We have a beautiful facility, it's incredible, and the 16% of your population don't just come to mine gym, they go to Harrison Fitness, and they go to SDS, and so that's all spread out, and that will continue. And so, what population will support this? You have to ask yourself those things. You have to look at that and say, is that really going to happen? If I'm relying on that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't bank on it. But now, I would bank on having some things that are a little more concrete. I love the idea of getting tournaments in here and having a facility to support that, but I don't think those facilities would cost $40 million. So I appreciate you letting me talk. I feel like an outsider, because I don't live here, but I do business here. Things like this are a beautiful attribute to a town. But to say that they're going to bring businesses for your children to work at later, I don't think you can say that's going to happen. It will be an asset, and I'm all for fitness and exercise. I love having facilities to do that. But you're going to be saddled with a big bill for that in the lawroom.
Yes, sir. Yeah, just, I ran a number here on that same figure, that $802,000 memberships, and I took an average to look at, she's charging $30 a membership, that's 26,746 people, members, that you're going to have to have to hit that number. I don't know if you think that's realistic, but that's what the numbers says.
Well, I will tell you that it's based off of 8,800 memberships, similar to what Batesville had. I actually think I might have done it a little bit lower than that, but Batesville generates about $800,000 to $900,000 based off of those memberships.
8,800 memberships are going to create?
Yeah, and some of them can be single, some of them can be senior memberships, there's a, you run the gamut of that.
I think a figure of $30, the average.
Is that per month, or is that?
Yeah, for a month. That's 40...
Any, any other questions or comments to Don Price? Don, thanks for, you and your wife. Mrs. Price, hold up your hand over here, because you came a long way, too, right? Now, we appreciate you being here. Any other comments or questions for Don Price? Our next speaker is Rick.
Our next speaker is Rick, I think they call you Mayor Rick, is that right, Rick?
That's right.
Rick Ellenbaugh. He's also came a long way from Batesville, Mayor of Batesville, Rick Ellenbaugh.
Thank you. Does anyone have any Diamond Mountain Dew out there? I'm past my bedtime in about thirty minutes. Hey, I'm, I'm delighted to be here tonight. I'm excited to be here. And first of all, city council, mayor, you guys have put yourself on the line. You've worked your high end off, and good job. Kudos to you. Because it, it takes someone like Mayor Jackson to stand up and fight for a progressive community. And I think he has shown that, and appreciate his leadership and his friendship. And I know you guys have done a lot of work. Batesville, we're the oldest existing city in the state of Arkansas. I feel like I came by with the taxes because there's not a straight way to get here. Our private jet's down, Mayor. I don't know if you guys have that jet ready to go or not, but mine's down, the city of Batesville. It's actually a crop duster. But anyway, we have a lot of resemblance. We're about the same in population. We're ten thousand, two hundred and forty-eight. Right across the river, we have another incorporated city called Southside. There's four thousand, so we're about the same. County, thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand. Socio-economic, we're pretty close to the same in that category. Your sales tax revenue is a little higher than ours. Now, let me talk about our community center. I had one old timer in my community. In nineteen twenty-seven, we got our first bridge across the White River. And I guess, you know, before that, I wasn't there, guys. But he said, when you built that community center, he said, it was probably the best thing that happened since the, the bridge across Batesville in nineteen twenty-seven. And I think that's a pretty much, a, 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 a pretty good testament to that. By the way, I do want to say that I do have relatives in this area, Sue and Bob. It's always good to see you guys. And that'd be my only fan club that I have here, so y'all can clap anytime you want to. There's a lot of folks that go to community centers that do not go to fitness centers. There are some folks that will not go and walk on your track unless it's a community center. Who is our largest membership? We've heard youth, youth, all night long. Our largest membership are you folks out there with gray hair. I've got pretty good genes because I'm as old as you guys are sitting out there. Sixty percent of our individuals who are a member of our community center are in the county. Every question that you guys have asked tonight, I was asked in two thousand and twelve. There has not been one question, there has not been one comment that I have not heard. Our folks are excited. Eight thousand, eight hundred members of that community center. Folks, we have people that life-changing. We've got over two hundred in senior aerobics. We've got men in senior aerobics. We have people standing in line at five AM to get into our community center. These folks never went to a fitness center. We have three fitness centers all, in our community also. They're still have their lights on. We have people who are members of our community center, and they're also a member of Anytime Fitness in our community. So, they cross over. Maybe they did lose a few members, but guys, it's been life-changing for a lot of these individuals. Mr. Fred Crew, one of my council members, could you make a comment about a couple of individuals? Mr. Fred Crew, he shows up at six-thirty every morning, five days a week. He was there in two thousand and ten, in two thousand and twelve. So he's, uh, uh, left, moved away, and came back, and he is back on the city council. But he is there at six-thirty, and Fred, I want you to talk about a couple of individuals that have been life, have been life-changing for thee too.
As much as I walk, you think I look better, but, uh...
We have a young man named Scotty, Vietnam veteran, shot four times in a Maycom Delta. Give me it. All right, let's give his first name. Shot four times Maycom Delta, left for dead. He's been a wheelchair and a walker ever since nineteen seventy. He joined the club, our community center, two years ago. Scotty came in a wheelchair and a walker. Two years later, he's walking two miles and doing yoga with the ladies. We have another dentist, retired dentist. He was so fat and heavy, he couldn't walk across the street to his mailbox. He hired someone to check his mail for him. He's been coming for fourteen months. He's lost ninety pounds. He hangs out there, and he's just a real success. His name's Zach Tenny, we don't recognize him, do we, Rick?
No.
I don't know what price you can put on things I've seen. I was, we have this heated pool, what is it, eighty-five, ninety degrees? Somehow does wonders for people, you know? And these, like you said, five o'clock, the senior citizens are banging the door down. The senior citizens run that thing to about ten o'clock. Because most of those old folks, we get up early, you know? But the things I've seen, I had a, my housekeeper, she couldn't swim. She's fifty-five years old. Her boyfriend had a houseboat. Well, she wanted to learn how to swim. Well, our swimmer, Mr. Turk, gave her some private lessons, but she hadn't paid for that now. It was twenty dollars each. Well, four lessons, she learned how to swim. Normally, Beth, her boyfriend, left her. But, uh, anyway, that's another story. Also, also, we have, every kid in Batesville school gets free swimming lessons. We teach every kid in our elementary school, right, Rick?
Absolutely.
We bust them in there, and then every kid learns how to swim in Batesville. We may not play football, but it's Harrison, we can swim, okay? So, I love Harrison. My boy went to college out there for two years, North Arkansas Community College, United States of Massachusetts. And I really loved, he called it knack, I guess that's what they call it now. But I'll, I'll, I'll make it short, because y'all are sick of hearing word-based, so I'm getting a little tired of myself. But, uh, really, you can't put a price on what I've seen. Senior citizens, I mean, they own that place from five to ten, it's their place. And I've seen a lot of the life-changing events, but I just mentioned two or three there. But I have two ladies that I know came in on walkers not more than six months ago. Now they're walkers on the corner over here, and they're walking our indoor track, which is the eighth of the mountain. I could go on and on. I love it. I just can't believe a town this progressive as Harrison doesn't have one already. And I think y'all will love it. People in the county who dip on it, they were first among, you know, first in line to join. Thank you for your time. And I, I could stay up here probably an hour, two hours, and talk about all the benefits. Economically, economically. It has been a game-changer. Our largest employer is White River Medical Center. Since then, we've had our residency program to start. These are young professionals that come in, several of them are married. They come in with children. The first place that they bring them is to the community center. And before they leave, they usually take the literature, or the majority of them. Every residency student that we've had come in has joined with their family. It's a game-changer. When Future Fuels, our chemical company, when we are recruiting chemists from all over the United States, the one thing they look at, a quality of life, a quality of place. Where do they come? Little things in your community make a big difference. Greenway trails. Let me tell you, if I was a realtor, I would start looking for property on the Greenway trail. I would put commercial places on the Greenway trail. I'd put a restaurant, whatever, residence. It increases your property value. So those are things that are very beneficial. We've hosted volleyball, you mentioned volleyball in your turn. We only bring about twelve hundred individuals come in, because every player brings on average three with them. Remember, some of them bring more. They stay in your hotels. I'm here because I'm paying for it. Mayor Gaskell, from Perrin, in two thousand and five, I went over and I befriended him. They had a community center. He said, whatever you do, make it larger, build it larger than you even think about it. He said, we have two floors. We went three. We have, he has eight lanes, we went ten. So, build for the future. You have one opportunity to build, and it's like building your last house. Because you know it's going to be fifty, seventy-five, maybe a hundred years. Your aquatic facilities. Pools are better today. The same thing about lapidated facilities. Folks, we had that. We had showers that didn't work. We had a pool that was sixty years old. Thank goodness for Gorillate. So, there were so many things. Because you know what I did for thirty years? I was an educator. I taught for thirty years. You know what I did for thirty-two years? I ran the swimming hole. I ran that sixty-two-year-old pool. We had a new pool, we called the new pool, and it was thirty-two years old. And the quality of those pools, to compare it to the day, is that you're going to get more usage. You're going to get a fifty-year, the mechanical things are going to break. A contingency, like you said. We have sponsorships. First Community Bank, which is coming, uh, they're a Batesville bank, they're coming to Harrison. And y'all need to know the bank, don't you? Where all the money's at. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollar sponsorship for ten years. That goes in our contingency fund. Citizens Bank, a hundred and fifty thousand for our little fitness center for our machines. So, what will we do? As soon as those machines are worn out, we will replace them. We have the money right there. Soon as the carpet gets worn, we have, a little of our meeting rooms have names. Some of it may be a five thousand dollar sponsor. Our chamber gala, we have there. Have you ever been to MMA fight? We've had four of those. I don't like to go because I don't like to see people get the kick, the crap kicked out of them. But, uh, and I'm afraid somebody in my community would challenge the mayor on him out there. We've had a recycled percussion. They were on like, uh, one of the talent shows. We've got, you know, I can't remember, they were third place. We've had them to come in. It was a free concert. They're a Las Vegas act. They have an, uh, act in Las Vegas right now. We have NASCAR driver Martin Martin, who has a dealership there, and he sponsored that. He's a good friend of his. Three thousand, we will seat thirty, three thousand in portable seats. We have a portable stage. You know, that's one thing that we found out. We tried to do our homework also. I went to Bentonville's, and the first thing when I looked at Bentonville, Bentonville, Sam Walton would be embarrassed. Build this thing a little bit larger, you know? They have a beautiful facility, but you know, their, their gymnasium, I did not feel like was large enough. They do not have the outdoor quads. But you've got to think about Bentonville's is right beside Rogers. Rogers has a community center also. So, those things, those communities are, they're exploding, you know? And it's hard to compare Harrison, Batesville to Walmart money. Because there's plenty of it, and it's beautiful. Even their streetlights are pretty. Their tombs are pretty. I asked them once when I went up there, the mayor, I said, "Mayor", I said, "This, this is just really pretty around here." Well, we have three order cultures. I can't even spell that word. And so, you know, all over town. But good for them, but we're not Walmart. Guys, I could go on and on. What's he going to do to your community? Well, let me tell you what we did when we built our baseball complex. We had a hundred and twenty teams, way too many. On Monday, I get a phone call from the owner of Sonic. He owns three in the Batesville area. Three Sonics, one of them's in the Southside community. He said, "Mayor, what did you do over the weekend?" He said, "I really don't want to know what you did, but do it again." Hey, they sold out of food. Our McDonald's sold out of food. Now, anytime we have an event, we correspond. They can look on our calendar when we have some type of fit coming in. Those are the people who are going to come into your community, they're going to pay the sales tax, and they're going to pay your community center off.
Mention downtown, please.
Downtown. Oldest community in the state of Arkansas. We had seventy percent of our storefronts lapidated. What do you do in two thousand and seven, when I took off? You'd say, hey, you know, what are we going to do? Real estate, you could buy a building downtown for twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, it has been revitalized. It has been revitalized, new streetscape, new, a state-of-the-art library, and an old historic building. New restaurants have come in. We opened just two weeks ago called The Royal. Can anybody remember a Sterling store back in the day?
Sterling?
You had one here? This gentleman built seven high-end apartments. He spent over a million dollars, and he's putting those on the weekly rental thing. And like I said, they're unbelievable. Bottom spot is, bottom is retaped. Now, we have ninety percent, not over ninety-five percent of our buildings are occupied downtown. Restaurants, it's vibrant. You see our young millennials. Folks now, millennials, they look for places that they can go, get on trails, get to the outdoors, and then they try to find them a job. You know, I'm sure you guys probably have individuals that live in Harrison, I mean Harrison, that drive to Branson to work. Same as our community. We have people who drive fifty and seventy miles to come in to Batesville to work. Now, we just had, in two thousand and eight, we had a public meeting, sort of like this, but it was a dream big session. We have been successful on all these things. We've got the can-do attitude right now, our community does. What are we going to do next? That's what individuals ask. Our bonds have paid back very nicely. We can refinance our bonds. We're using the same individuals from Crews and Associates, Paul Phillips. And we could do a twelve to fif- fifteen million dollar project. We had a meeting two weeks ago, and in two thousand and eight, we had eighty individuals. We had eighty individuals to show up in two thousand and eight on our dream big project. You know how many individuals we had in our community center gym floor? We had two hundred and fifty showed up two weeks ago, Thursday. Two hundred and fifty came back, and they put down, and we said, "What do you want our community to do?" And we're just now going through it, and we're evaluating that. Now, will we put it back to the voters? We'll have to go back to the voters also. Would not increase the tax, there would be no tax increase. But we, we're not sure. The school has a millage thing, so we're probably going to hold off. Because we respect, we know how important education is in our community. But you know, they're looking, some of the things that they came up with Riverside Park, Riverside, maybe do a walk bridge. Not instead of the big damn bridge, we're going to do the little damn bridge. Just like they have in Little Rock. So, all of these things have changed attitudes. And like I said, I've heard every question. I've heard the county versus the city, city versus the county. But at the end of the day, do you know where the folks that said no and voted against it, where are they today? They're members of the Batesville Community Center. We have them. We have them from all walks of life. So, thank you, guys. I don't want to keep any, any other time. But I'd be glad to answer any questions you can. I know it's getting late, guys. Yes, sir?
Okay, my question to you is, is in two thousand and ten, didn't you pledge the fourth voters to vote this, this money in how much?
Uh, yes, we did. We had close to a fifty million dollar project. We had actually, in oh-seven, right before that, we did a fifty million dollar wastewater. We put that in two thousand and ten. We had, uh, uh, land, a lot of land acquisition. We had the problem of finding land. So we came back and basically placed the land, I mean, the community center on existing, and we did not buy as much land. Of course, at that time, guys, we had RV parks, we had skateboard parks. We were, we probably had Disney World. And so we had to scale it back to Silver Dollar City this time around. But we, a lot of ours was the land issue, and we had picked a spot of land. And we, we lost by less than a hundred votes on that. So we did revamp, we came back with a larger... So we did revan- we came back with a larger community center. Uh, we had uh, uh, two gym floors, we came back to three, we came back with two lanes. So we ended up getting a better facility. And like I said, we had not, we didn't have uh, you know, I, I, I checked with all these other mayors, but we didn't do a really good job at that, at that point. And uh, we, we just felt we got a better uh, interest rate at that time. Matter of fact, you guys, that, that's pretty, pretty remarkable right now, what, what you guys, because we're not, we're not in it that good right now. And that's one reason we're looking at the possibility of refinancing.
Okay, so it's fifty million dollars in two thousand and ten, what did you guys actually give to build your exit?
What did we end? We ended up with about twenty-seven, twenty-nine million in that, in that area right there.
And you added more to your?
We actually had, yeah, we actually added more to it, because a lot of that was land cost. Uh, a lot of that was land, and, and like I said, we were a little, you know, we had eight baseball fields. We had eight softball fields. We had, you know, it was on steroids. We were just, uh, you know, someone should've grabbed you by the seat of the bridges and said, "That's way, you know, way too many, you know, too much at that time."
Well, do you, uh, I mean, I've heard a lot about Batesville, I've done a lot of studies. You guys have a lot of industry over there, right?
Uh, we do, but I don't know if we have any more than what Harrison does.
Don't you have two law, two lawnmower gills, chicken places, and all the other places?
We have poultry, we have poultry. We have about two thousand four hundred in our poultry. Uh, our medical center, which is a driving force, we have about eighteen hundred. Um, our lawn mowers, both of them together is less than a thousand. A Bad Boy mower. And uh, you know, where is Bad Boy gonna come for their Thanksgiving dinner? They're coming to the community center, because they treat all their employees. Uh, so, so they utilize these things. Now, and let me talk about, I think, partnerships. Line College, we have Line College there. Uh, they have seven hundred, uh, they're projecting around twelve hundred. We have UACC B affiliated with University of Arkansas, and it has, you know, fluctuates from twelve to fifteen hundred. Uh, but we have formed partnerships with the Line College. Our swim coach is actually starting their new swim team. Uh, the high school, our swim coach coaches the high school also. So we, we've formed these partnerships. White River Medical Center utilizes the therapeutic pool. Now, you know, one thing, I didn't even mention the therapeutic pool. That is a very, very, uh, huge for uh, for the community. So their PTs, physical therapists, they come and use the uh, that with a partnership right there. And they are, uh, they, they do sponsor that particular pool for us, but we've got a working relationship with them. So, uh,
And what was the vote in twelve?
Uh, in, in twelve, it was sixty percent approval. Yes, yeah, sure was.
And that was twenty-six million dollars difference from the original proposal?
Yes. Yeah, sure was. Like I said, if I had to do it over again, I would build four, you know, gym. Because right now, my parks committee, now, let, let me talk about my parks commission. We have a parks, we do not have a parks commission. We had a parks commission, now we have a parks committee. Same individual. Mr. The Late Don Zemmerman from the Arkansas Municipal League said, "The city council is elected, the mayors are elected. Those are the folks who need to run your facility." Those are the folks who need to manage your facility and run your facility, and so we changed to that parks committee. We have the same members, we get the same input, and, but at the end of the day, the money is accounted by uh, the people who need to count the money. So, you know, just, just to mention that right there. Now, as far as the sustainability, we challenged, and we had to add, you know, staff. We add staff. But we make sure, when you walk into that Batesville Community Center, it is nice. I promised uh, all of our citizens that that thing would be nice. We go back and we refurbish the gym floor, uh, every probably thirteen or fourteen months. Light sanding, put a coat on it. So, we keep that thing sustainable, we keep it nice. Our new baseball fields, like I said, it was an embarrassment in oh-seven. Uh, so they have taken pride, uh, we have got the staff. And one other thing, you've got, like you said, you don't have that money. Now, you're gonna have money to match your grants. We did not have money. If we wanted to build a hundred thousand dollar playground equipment, we could not go to parks and tourism, because we didn't have a fifty thousand dollar match. Now, we have the capability, and we have built those things, because we have that money that we can put in our parks and, uh, in recreation. And now, this parks and recreation, I have a golf course, a nine-hole golf course, uh, a Munich golf course. And we lose, lose a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. And I told uh, Mayor Jackson at lunch, or at dinner tonight, that I was going to give that golf course to him. He's just gonna have to move it. So. Guys, thank you so much.
I think we have a question for the, Matt Mayor there. Mayor, Mayor, does, uh, does, does Harrison have your, uh, one of our boys, your boys' basketball coach over there? Is Jeff Morrow still over there?
No, Je- Jeff, actually, he is moving up the mountain with you. He wanted to win.
Okay, okay. I, I was thinking that Harrison had said, "Boy," another question, another question back here.
I'm interested to know how much new industry came into Batesville?
How much new industry? Our industry has increased. Bad Boy has increased employees. In oh-seven, they were down. Thing about economic development, guys, if you get a new industry in here, you won the lottery. Industry, the best thing in economic development is to support the industry you have and continue to support it, make it grow. Reinforce that. You have to enforce what you have. Bad Boy has gone from uh, from uh, producing two hundred lawn mowers in two thousand and two to sixty thousand mowers uh, this year. So, our industry is growing. We lost two companies in two thousand and eight. In two thousand and eight, we lost uh, an Emerson plant that employed about a thousand at one time. We lost GDX uh, that same time. But with that, our poultry industry has increased, they have grown. So everything that we have, in two thousand and eight, let me go back to that little charrette that we had, that meeting where we had eighty to a hundred people there. One thing they said, "We want jobs, we want jobs, we want jobs." Now, in two thousand, and looking at this, uh, the meeting that we had two weeks ago, not one thing came up. But we still, we want to be vibrant, but one thing, when I ran for office, I wanted to build a community that my kids could move back to. And so our industry is increasing. Have we got retail? Yes, we've got retail chains. We've had, we've got three coffee shops that have opened, drive-through coffee shops, that have opened. Uh, two have already opened in the last two months. Uh, we've got the TJ Maxx, some of the same chains that you guys have. Uh, we've got the Freddys. We've had all of these things start coming into your community. Those people employ. Uh, OMP, which was purchased by Georgia, fifth-largest poultry company. They ended up buying that, oh, oh, sorry, Mountain Polo. They had a meeting with them last week. They're going to employ, they're expanding, and they're going to hire eight more executives and two hundred individuals on the line. So, that is where our industry is going right there.
Next speaker, Mr. Bob Pinson.
Before you do that real quick, can I just say something to you? I wanna mirror that fellow's comments on senior citizens. Uh, I'm a senior health advocate myself, and I'm also a water roads instructor, as most of you know. And at one point, when we used to have a mountain crash here, it was the only big facility that had a pool here. I used to teach there too, along with another instructor. Seniors were pretty much the base of what the people that came there. And the water classes alone, the water classes were always full. We had two classes a day, every day. Now, we don't have long of that facility, but there's people still wanting to be able to use it. I even had a young lady, I say young lady, she was actually older than I am, because she has this bright smile and what have you. But she was overweight, she uh, was not able to do any land exercises when she needed it, it was therapy. But she came to classes, she went out of therapy, and it did help her so much, because she knew she could exercise in the water, but she couldn't exercise nowhere else. So she was a very faithful client. And unfortunately, her husband had a heart attack, and they had to move to Illinois here just the last few months, several back. But when I do make contact with her, she, she misses it so much. She has made a big difference in her life. So to have an opportunity for seniors to have more opportunity to be able to stay, to exercise, be a part of the programs. A lot of their programs were not just water roads, there were yoga, there were chair roads. There were a lot of other things that was involved. And over eighty percent of them were pretty much seniors. And a lot of them, young people couldn't keep up with a few of those seniors, pretty, pretty, pretty strong folks. So just to have an opportunity for the seniors to be able to go somewhere where they can maintain that quality of life, which is so important for us. You know, it was a big thing. So I appreciate your comments on that.
Thank you. Mr. Bob Pinson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ray. Uh, I too want to thank the mayor and all the city employees for coming out and explaining to us uh, uh, what you think we need. I appreciate that, Mayor. Uh, to tell you what kind of city we have, last Friday afternoon, we buried my Aunt Alpha Keter. She was ninety-nine years old. If she had lived until tomorrow, she would've been a hungry. Her birthday is uh, September the twenty-fifth. She didn't hardly make it, but my point being, trying to tell you what kind of city we have, we came out of a prayer in church, and it was a city cruiser sitting at the exit. I don't know who to thank for that. I don't know where to thank uh, Mayor Jackson, the chief of police, Chris Brady, our past mayor, like Mayor Crockett, Mayor Reynolds, or Mayor Moles. But this trooper, he had one help along the way. Came to an intersection and, and he had a help, he had help there. But he got on out to Cash's Ave, where the Edwards grocery used to be, and I'm thinking, "How's he gonna handle this?" He pulls crossways in the southbound lane, he gets the traffic stopped. And when we get to Benedict's Auto Group, he passes us. He's out at seven eleven, across from Clarit, and he has the traffic stopped there. I don't know who this young man is, but he needs to be committed. Would you take care of that, Mayor?
Take care of it.
I, I, I don't know who he is, but he did an excellent job. He peeled off at Clarit and come on back to the city route. And we traveled all through the big city of Belfont, and my aunt was buried at the Belfont Cemetery. And when we, about the time the ambulance got to the cemetery road, there was a state trooper there that stopped the traffic. So the funeral procession was long and large, and we were able to stay together the whole trip. So, that's what Harrison, Arkansas is all about. And uh, this young uh, city trooper needs to be committed. Uh, back many years ago, there was a young man coming to Harrison, Arkansas, and bought a little strip of land, brought his family, bought a little strip of land uh, next to the Sears store. He had a McDonald's franchise. And that man that's with us tonight, his name is Jerry Maylin. Jerry, stand up, would you please? Jerry has served on uh, uh, a lot of different boards around town. He's, he uh, he uh, there was only two banks and two savings and loans. And uh, a few businesses helped him, and John Phillips. And they built together, correct me if I'm wrong, but, but with their leadership, they built the baseball field that we enjoy today. Uh, and we appreciate you for that, Jerry. I know that to be a fact. Jerry owned and operated McDonald's for many years. He gave a lot of time to the city and to the uh, to the youth of the, of the city. Not only that, but he gave a lot of his own money. I'm not gonna take up a lot of time tonight, the Cardinals are playing. Uh, they're out in Arizona. Last time I checked, twenty, uh, we're ahead one to nothing. I'd say we beat the Cardinals. So, uh, appreciate everybody coming very much. And uh, if you wouldn't please, well, I understand we're gonna do this again October the, uh, October the twenty-ninth. Uh, but thank you again, and thank everybody for coming.
Thank you, Bob Pinson. Uh, if you will, uh, keep in mind, I'd like to, uh, the mayor, Jerry, would you say one comment about the election coming up, the dates?
Yeah, early voting, November tenth, election day, November twelfth, over at the election center. Yeah, only.
So, so only, uh, only at the election center, no, no uh, uh, voting booths out in the various wards or anything like that, okay? At this time, thank you all so much for coming, and Mike, if you'll come on up and give our closing session, benediction. Thank you so much for coming. I'd like to now introduce again Mike Bishop with our benediction.
Yes, let us pray. Thank you, Heavenly Father, for a great meeting tonight. We thank you for all of our panelists and the folks that have endured the meeting. It was a long meeting, but there was a lot of good productive uh, conversation here this evening. Just be with everybody as they travel home, be with them safe, keep them, get them home safely. And to continue to bless our, our beautiful city and our county. Thank you so much. Good night.